Good evening. Welcome to the July 19 Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. We will call our meeting to order. I'd like to start with welcoming Mayor Ben Cawhun from Naxet. Thanks for being with us this evening. And also welcoming all the Planning Board members. Later on the agenda, we are doing a joint work session with our Planning Board. So thank you all so much for coming out and being here with us tonight. As we have some very important work to do with our land use plan. With that, if you would please join us and rise to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. A true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we move into our moment of silence, I would like to ask for you to keep the Crist family in your thoughts and prayers. A.J. is a firefighter with us and his dad's a volunteer firefighter. A.J.'s grandmother or A.J.'s mother passed away. So go keep their family in your thoughts and prayers, please. And with that, I would like to ask that we enter a moment of silence. Thank you. Next up is the Agenda Approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Agenda.
Second.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say what I'm saying, aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to our next Agenda item. We have two public hearings this evening. Our town attorney is out this evening, but Mr. Sharp is here, serving as our town attorney. They're within the same firm, we contract with the firm, so welcome. And we'll turn this over to you now to conduct the public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. There'll be two public hearings conducted this evening by the Kill double Hills Board of Commissioners. The following rules will apply to the hearings. First, a public notice of each hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bulletin boards in accordance with the statutory requirements for the matter that's under discussion. A copy of the notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will record all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements, statements shall be recorded in a similar manner and made a part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made if there is a spokesman for a group or if your statement is submitted in writing to the clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone over here so that your statement will be taped. There will be no debates. Please identify yourself when you come forward to the microphone. With that introductory comment out of the way, the first public hearing will now come, please come to order. This hearing is for the purpose of the Board to consider requested amendment to Chapter 153, zoning, Saga Construction, Section 153.120, site requirements, residential low zone to add pervious permeable pavement lot condition, lot coverage reduction calculation. And we've got one person who's signed up for this, which is Michael Flynn. So when Mr. Flynn's done, I'll ask if there's anyone else who wants to speak on it, but we'll go with Mr. Flynn first, please.
Evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Michael Flynn, I'm the Coastal Advocate for the North Carolina Coastal Federation. I'd like to submit the following comments regards to proposed text amendment. Section 4A of the text states that all permeable paving systems shall comply with criteria of the North Carolina Division of Water Quality Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual. Current addition, within that section, C5 permeable pavement, the current North Carolina Division of Environmental Quality Stormwater Design Manual provides maintenance and inspection recommendations that include inspecting the permeable surface for ponding during and after storm events to identify performance deficiencies that result when debris such as sand clogs the pore space within the permeable concrete, which would allow water to infiltrate the ground rather than sheet flow to conventional stormwater conveyance systems. This permeable surface can become impervious when just an inch of sand fills the pore space and regular vacuuming and sweeping is recommended. Like all other stormwater control measures, permeable pavements require maintenance to provide long-term stormwater benefits. That responsibility currently lies upon the property owner, which in many cases may not be a full-time resident if the property is used as a vacation rental. Therefore, it is encouraged that the town of Kill double Hills follow the recommendations within the town's current stormwater management plan developed in 2010 to develop an inspection program to promote the maintenance of these private stormwater best management practices to reduce the potential for the permeable concrete to become an impervious surface over time, especially considering the fact that an additional 5% lot coverage is included in this text amendment as an incentive. The regulatory authority to do so could be derived from the longstanding requirement in Statute 153.07J of the Town Code to retain the 4.3 inches of rain resulting from a 10-year to hour rain event. Systems will not continue to meet this required design parameter if not maintained properly. The town's stormwater management plan also references using a utility fee to fund the inspection program since there is currently no regulation to ensure that each BNP installed within the town is routinely maintained. Coastal water quality that supports fishing, swimming, and a vibrant coastal economy is the top priority of the North Carolina Coastal Federation. And infiltration is the preferred stormwater management strategy when feasible. Therefore, I ask the Board of Commissioners to recognize the need for establishing a mechanism to inspect and maintain these permeable paving systems prior to approving their use. Thank you for your consideration.
Do we have anyone else who wants to speak on this public hearing matter? Mayor and Board, we have no one else. I don't know what your custom is. Does the Board discuss each one?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so I think the floor for Board discussion, questions, comments. Would you like to share their thoughts first?
I think each of you should be required to say permeable, perv- permeable pavement, pervious permeable pavement, three times quickly. Before you discuss this.
We'll follow your lead if you'd like to.
I feel lot coverage is a good place right now as it is. I think our town is compared to other municipalities is fair and generous with our current ordinance. And I really haven't seen a lot of communication from our community really wanting to change that. So I'm happy with kind of leaving our lot coverage as it is now. And I really don't see a real big urgency in changing this role a little. I'm kind of happy to stay as we are, not make any more additions to that, lot coverage for Kill double Hills.
I think, I think we're pretty level as well as far as the lot covers that we have in all of our zones. I think that I'm comfortable with the way that it is now. And I think we're probably more level than anyone else with lot coverage. And again, I have to think that if we do something on this particular zone, this is going to affect a lot of, lot of different properties. And I'm not real comfortable with, with some of them increasing the lot coverage. So I'm pretty comfortable where we're at.
When I was looking at this, I could go either way, honestly. I can see both sides of it. At the same time, especially after hearing Mr. Flynn's comments, I, I agree that it would probably, if, if we did do it, need to be contingent on, on the maintenance of, of the permeable surface because in a lot of places, I don't know about y'all, but I've seen it where they're, they're not permeable. They really do, and I, and I don't see the maintenance being kept anywhere else. So that, to me, especially since that's the one comment that we got, I would, I would lean towards no. If, if, again, if we had a big outcry, I could see maybe possibly going the other way if there were some arguments for that. But I, I do think that, like Terry said as well, we really need to take into consideration that it, it will affect more than just one area.
I think the idea that it would reduce the runoff is a big plus for us because we have an issue with that in a lot of places in town. And in this development and other future developments, it's going to be an issue like it is elsewhere in town. And I think that 5% is a small trade-off for the result. It would, it would result in having less runoff and less issues with neighbors like we have had in the past. In that case, it becomes a civil issue for us, but we don't have regulations on fill or anything. But other zones in the town, we already allow, what is it, Mayor, help me?
Are you asking where pervious pavement is currently allowed?
It's allowed in all the other districts, right?
It's allowed in the Ocean Impact Residential Zone with a 10% increase. It's allowed in the Commercial Zone with a 10% increase. And it's allowed in the Light Industrial Zone with a 10% increase.
It is, it's currently allowed in residential. There's just not an incentive attached to it.
It is allowed in residential.
And it's so costly that people aren't doing it.
You can put pervious pavement, a lot of people do use turf stone. They just don't get any lot coverage credit for it. And some people use gravel, some people use gravel pave. They just are not reaping any of the credits for it.
Yeah, there's, there's more than one type, obviously. There's the type that has referred to, that may need some more maintenance than others and may need vacuuming or whatever.
That's correct.
But there's other ones that are low maintenance too.
Correct.
And the one that requires the most attention in the future is, I understand, is probably prohibitive for most builders or people wanting to build their own homes because the cost is, I was told, six to eight times what it'd be for plain concrete and stuff.
I, I can't say whether it would be prohibitive. It is much more costly, but the pervious concrete or pervious asphalt does have the higher maintenance standard.
I don't have a problem with the, the change personally. I think it's good to, it's a small trade-off, I think, for helping with the runoff.
Yeah, personally, I struggle with this one because I, we don't address lot coverage at all in our land use plan. So looking to that for guidance, it's not mentioned at all. However, what is mentioned in our land use plan, not only the existing one, but the one that we're going to talk about tonight, we're looking at the changes, is encouraging the use of permeable for stormwater management. And then we know stormwater management is, is a big issue. We currently, as I mentioned, it's allowed in residential, but people aren't taking advantage of it because it is so costly. So then it falls to, as I'm weighing the pros and cons, do you make a decision to go with something like this or do you not? It is a nice incentive that may draw more people to use it, which then would help if, if they're fronting that cost, help overall in our community with stormwater. The, the, the one thing that, I think where, where I stand at this moment is if we were to move it forward with consideration, if, if there's enough support to even do that, I actually would want to table it to take in consideration Mr. Flynn's comments and actually have staff add something with respect to coming back with us on some type of inspection program. So if there's enough desire to keep this on the table, then I'd want that to be part of it.
It would have to have some, some sort of maintenance program that, that, I'm like, she was talking about earlier. There, I see a lot of it that has become so filled in with sand that it's not doing what it's supposed to do. And so I think that you have to have some sort of maintenance program if it's going to work. That would be the only thing that would change my mind as far as allowing the increase in, in the lot coverage is if there's a maintenance program that we can be assured that would work.
I like the idea as well of looking into a maintenance program. For example, it'd make me feel a lot more comfortable optimizing it and then maybe give a chance to the public some more of these advantages of these permeable concretes and surfaces and get folks more about it and be far more knowledgeable and comfortable with it as well.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with taking it for that purpose.
Yeah, to have staff develop and look into some sort of maintenance program. I think that, that would be a good thing.
From a procedural perspective in doing that and a timeline.
You don't encourage some guidance on that?
Just to, just to clarify, as, as Meredith stated and I think some of the other Commissioners referenced, we have, we currently allow this in other zones. It's currently in other zones. So I think a maintenance program would need to be for townwide, not just, not just assigned to this zoning request. So Meredith, would, would it be something that you would go back to the Planning Board, ask staff, Board's guidance with a maintenance program that would be a separate ordinance amendment?
If, if a maintenance program was going to be established, I would recommend it be put into the stormwater section of the Town Code for any pervious pavement throughout town, which would then, it wouldn't be zoned by zone. It would, it would cover them all. Because we do have quite a bit already in existence in town, not just commercial. We have residential pervious pavement in the OIR a lot, quite, quite a bit of it. And so I don't know if that needs to stop the, this from going forward since others already exist, but we would, you would direct staff, we would generate a staff amendment to the stormwater plan, stormwater section to address maintenance of pervious surfaces. And that would come back, go to the Planning Board, come back to you, set a hearing and have a hearing. That would look at probably October before you could have a hearing.
Would places where it already exists, would they be exempt from any new rules that are put in? So they may have gone and done something with the PPP and, and, excuse me, now without knowing that at some point in time they have to have.
Well, it actually states in there that they have to maintain it. But what's happening is you need an inspection program to make sure they're maintaining it.
Right, the best management practices that's already listed in this amendment requires them to do it. What we would do is develop an inspection plan to make sure there's compliance with pervious pavement requirements. It's already written into this ordinance. This ordinance already says it.
So, yeah, I get it, they already knew they had to change anything.
So there is already, we're not making up a maintenance plan. We're making up an inspection plan to enforce maintenance of pervious pavement.
Townwide.
Townwide, it's not a, those, those are already in, the draft you're looking at now actually has it. I think Mr. Flynn said it. It says permeable systems shall comply with the criteria of the North Carolina Division of Water Quality Stormwater Best Management Practices Manual, current addition. That is very specific as to the maintenance plans. We would come up with an inspection plan to ensure the maintenance plan is being followed.
So with her saying that, if the Board desires, you can keep these two separate. What she's talking about will not change, Meredith corrected her wrong, what you're talking about will not change to the language of this ordinance request.
There'll be no language change to this proposed amendment. It would be an inspection schedule or an inspection plan to make sure that these, this language that refers to the North Carolina, that's the same language that's in the OIR zone. It's the same language that's in the Light Industrial Zone and it's the same language that's in the Commercial Zone. So what we would do is, is set up inspection slash enforcement of, of the existing language. This is no different than all the other languages in the other three zones that this is already allowed.
So it would, when, if we table it, and it would come back to us in exactly the same form. The only difference being we would have set up an inspection program prior, correct?
It would, it would, it'd be totally a separate amendment.
Yeah, I understand.
So it wouldn't be attached to this one at all. Nothing's going to change on this amendment unless all, unless there's a change to the maintenance. Unless there's something else you don't care for. But if really the maintenance is what's holding up, this proposed amendment's not going to change at all.
Yeah, well, that, the inspection program would be separate from this.
Yes, sir.
But it would be in existence before this came back.
It would come together, it would dovetail.
There would be, there would be about an eight-week gap. If you did this tonight and you adopted the maintenance plan, there'd be about an eight to 10-week gap. But the Commercial Zone has been in effect for six or seven years. So, no, five years.
So based on that discussion, what is the pleasure of the Board?
I can only make a motion if you table it. Until such time as we have an inspection program in place, it's on, right?
You have to actually give the dates so that we know.
I don't know what to do.
Well, it sounds like the meeting in October is what Meredith's saying, that the, the maintenance plan would have an opportunity to be developed, the maintenance inspection guide would have an opportunity to be staffed and then sent through to the, you did say it needed to go to the Planning Board as part of the zoning ordinance?
Indeed, it would go to the Planning Board. The earliest it could go would be the August 21st meeting, which would, if the Board, is the schedule for September still the 10th or did that change? Okay, that's where the Board would set the public hearing. And if the other meetings stay the same also, the public hearing would be held on October the 8th, unless those dates change.
So this lasts in two months.
So if you wanted to table this, you would table it to the October 8 meeting. Your direction, the staff is already to make, to provide the maintenance. That doesn't need to be part of your motion to table.
But this, this particular amendment is not going back anywhere and nothing's changing with it. So this will just stay on your table. It will not go back to any of the other Boards.
Right.
Okay, just making sure everybody, we're all on the same page.
Okay, what you guys think?
Well, you've, you've directed, you've directed us to do what some of your concern was, which was that you're concerned that it's not going to be maintained. And that, that is going to be done by the staff, which will affect some of the areas that you've already commented on that are not being done. If your intent is to adopt the ordinance, the ordinance can be adopted now while the schedule is put into place, is formulated. That's simply up to the Board. But we need to keep it as far as an ordinance is separate.
Well, if, if we're agreeing on in consensus, as well, as we've discussed, if we agree that if this is done, the inspection program is created, is there any point in keeping it for another couple of months or not?
Not if everyone's in agreement that, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what my concern was, was not having a maintenance, or not, not that we don't have a maintenance plan, have an inspection. There is a maintenance requirement.
Right.
That's stated, but not having an inspection plan.
And that would be beneficial to these other areas that already have it, that you've noticed where they haven't been maintained yet.
And I think, again, that it's hard for me to, knowing that we've been really intentional in making decisions with other zoning areas to encourage. We've put, we've put much larger incentives down, the 10%, and it's hard for me to justify not when it's consistent with what we're trying to do moving forward with stormwater management. Again, the heartburn was we're going to create more of this potentially. We can't, the good that we're trying to accomplish with it, if we don't have an inspection and accountability system, we may not be helping ourselves or helping our community. So we have to do that and along with whatever that inspection plan is, is, you know, funding or whatever may come with that too. You had started the motion, but it wasn't a second, so it died. So depending on, we're back to whatever the pleasure of the Board is in taking this.
Excuse me, may I say something? I, I'm not sure if I missed my time. I didn't know if it was applicant period, I speak or.
May I say if he was the applicant?
Well, we've had the public portion where we've had the people that have signed up for it and we invited other people to speak. And then we're now in the Board's discussion for here, is where we are right now.
I thought it was applicant period to talk, okay, I missed it, I was confused, sorry.
That's, that's okay. Make a motion that it's applicant period or is that? If the Board wants to have somebody speak, it's okay. All right, why not, do you want me to do that?
I'll make a motion to let the applicant.
No, we, we don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion, that's okay.
If there's consensus.
Go ahead. And so what you're saying, what we have here is this gentleman is, is with the applicant, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, if you'll identify yourself, if you missed that part of the rules, you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Sue McGook there with Saga Construction. I appreciate the discussion and consideration of this request. Let me start by saying, since I put forth this request, what was my motivation? What was it coming from? And part of this then related from just being a builder and designing plans. With the current lot coverage, you know, you can build a three-story house, parking underneath it and it can be a five, six-bedroom house. When you take that same house as a three-bedroom and put it on a single story, you couldn't even fit it a lot of times. So that's where it started. And I was, you know, I was, I was looking at not every house is going to be three stories or vacation rental. And, but you see a lot of that because that's what a lot of the code pushes you to, particularly with lot coverage. So going to, I was trying to say, how can we solve this without, because lot coverage is a sensitive issue. But if we look at lot coverage, like why is it a sensitive issue? Because it's how much impact you're dealing on the, you know, on that lot. A lot of it has to do with stormwater runoff. The way this is looked at, you're not, you're going to end up properly maintained, and I agree with inspection program, but, and even if pervious is done right, I mean, it's, there's some maintenance, but it gets you a long time. And, you know, it's going to be limited lots that you even need too much maintenance. But I agree with inspection program. But however you look at this, if it's properly inspected, you have less runoff than without this. And it is expensive to do this and there needs to be some credit. So how, this is going to only reduce stormwater runoff. I think there should be more than 5%, but I know this is a sensitive issue and I was for this. This is very limited. Even if you're talking about 5%, if you, this is only for driveway. It's further limited by you can't just stick your parking underneath and get it. You're going to have to have half your parking still outside and half underneath. The way this is done, it gets you a little bit more. And what it allows to do a three-story, two-car garage and not have a drive aisle that's 10 feet wide. That's what ends up happening in law. This allows you to have a little bit, my purpose in this was to have a little better driveway. So it is, it's just, you know, it's in harmony with the house. So I just want you to give that consideration. I think it's going in the right direction. I wanted to solve the issue I had in a conscious way. And, and that's where this is coming from. I, I believe they should go further because if you give 10%, that means you have even more pervious coverage than a 5%. And that's the relationship with this. Now, the state used to see pervious, this is like a 40 or 60% credit, but the state started at a, you know, at a 40 to 50%. Now they give you 100% credit for pervious. So, you know, we're not getting back from the town. I think it's a small step in the right direction. That's where it came from. I can answer any questions, you know, from, you know, about it. But I do understand your discussion and your challenges around it. So anyway, I just want to say a few words and I appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
So, pleasure of the Board.
It's your pleasure.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that the Board approve their request amendment, Chapter 153 zoning, Saga Construction, 153.120, site requirements, residential low zone, to add permeable pavement lot coverage reduction calculation. lot coverage reduction calculations. Board of Commissioners files this request, requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, 153.120 site requirements, residential low zone, to add permeable pavement, lot coverage reduction calculation is consistent with all comprehensive plans or other officially adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable, and that the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it will reduce runoff from lots in the RLs zone.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please sign as saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Ready to move on to the second public hearing?
Pervious permeable pavement portion of the public hearing is closed. Second public hearing will come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, Aubrey Davis and Eric Reese, Section 153.002 definitions, and Section 153.076, paren D, close paren, off-street parking and loading, table of parking requirements to define brewery and create a parking standard for breweries as a secondary use to restaurants. Do we have anyone who has signed up to speak at this public hearing? Do we have anyone who has not signed up but who wishes to speak at this public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Please introduce yourself, three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Ben Cahun, I'm representing the applicants, primarily here to answer any questions the board may have in your deliberations. The, the parking amendment was one that we worked with staff on, this would reduce the parking requirement for the brewery portion of restaurants that had a brewery attached to them, to match the same standard for other accessory uses that are found in restaurants like retail. We think that that, we thought that that was a reasonable starting point, and in this case, it will, in this particular case, and I realize that this is a zoning ordinance that applies broadly to the town, in this particular instance, it gives the applicants the flexibility to address some kind of longstanding non-conformities, and we're already, you know, well into planning the fixes there for that, for that site. And so, with that, I'll just answer any questions you may have, I believe it passed unanimously by the planning board, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
And one of the, the logic for this is that that portion is not open to the public, like the restaurant is, so it makes sense.
Comments, discussion? Okay, a motion or action will be in order?
I'll make a motion. The Board of Commissioners files the requested amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, 153.002 definitions, and 1.153.076D, off-street parking and loading, table of parking requirements to define brewery and create a parking standard for breweries as a second use to restaurants is consistent with all the comprehensive plans and other officially adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable, and the amendment is reasonable in public interest because it's a brewery. Brewery exists.
We can say, and it matches other accessory use.
Matches other accessory, that sounds fair.
There's a motion to approve the amendment, is there a second?
Second.
A second, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, behalf of the applicants, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on then to our first time set aside this evening for public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone that's here with us tonight that wishes to address the board on any topic if they're choosing to do so. We ask if you wish to speak at this public comment time, that you approach the podium and identify yourself by name and address, please. We also ask that if you would keep your comments to three minutes if you're speaking as an individual, and five minutes if you're speaking on behalf of a group. Were there any sign up, no one signed up? Okay, so now we'll call from the floors, anyone who wishes to speak at this public comment time? Yeah, Skip, welcome.
Skip Jones, 1508 Captain's Lane, I'm here in Kill Devil Hills. I think this is kind of backing up a little bit, as far as the payments stuff is, I think there's some misconceptions, and there's a wide variety of permeable pavement between ter stones and concrete. Concrete, obviously, can, the voids can fill in, and it needs, in my opinion, much more maintenance over the period than the other types. Other types, you typically fill them with sand when you install them, whether it's the open web ter stone, or I did a house in Mania, which they only include ter stone as any lot coverage whatsoever. So, I did a whole driveway, patio, all this stuff, and it was amazing. I mean, you've got, it's got to be installed properly, there's layers of gravel and whatnot below it, but it actually just absorbs all the water, it was fairly steep driveway, ain't partying, no runoff at all. So, I'm not a big proponent of increasing the lot coverage, but I am a big proponent of using permeable pavements, more so when the, I don't really see personally, I would not want to use permeable concrete on much driveways, but the other, the other applications are, not only do they look really nice, but they do a great job, so I think we need to start encouraging people to use it. And I, you know, at times, most recently in a house, 5% would have, I could have made the driveway more reasonable and more functional driveway, but I was so limited, like you said, you know, it was a real narrow driveway, winding out, but a little, 5% would have made that driveway much more functional. So, I think we need to encourage people to use, to go in that direction as much as we can, and most of the other towns do encourage it, they'll give you 40% to 100% reduction on your lot coverage for that area, so that's a pretty big difference, and we also, we have the highest lot coverage issues, well, not issues, but restrictions in Kill Devil Hills, but we also include every little thing, whether it's open decks, or gravel, or whatever, where other towns don't as much, so you, you know, I think there's, want enough information disseminated on this, on this application, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes.
Chip Olmending, 909th Avenue, there's a couple of projects going on in town that are multifamily, they're townhouses, and they're both in the same zone, the light industrial, or light industrial one or two, I'm not sure which, which one it is, and I understand that in those particular zones, we don't require any architectural regulations or, but we do in other zones, when you're building a multifamily or other structures, and I'm wondering if it's possible that with these two, these two particular developments, one is very architectural, the other one not so much, and I was wondering if there's some way that we might be able to add an architectural design requirement in that particular zone, I'd like to see it on everything because we have such a mixed use here with, you know, different buildings and different businesses, but at least if we're building multifamilies in those particular zones, that we do require them to have some type of architectural requirement. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, we will move into response to public comment, Skip, thanks for your comments. I would think, Chip, we're gonna, there's a couple of segments in the land use plan tonight, that actually, there's one, I know I read something about architectural standards, so that might be, I'm losing it, I'm looking at you, Mary, but anyway, that might be a good time for us to talk about that as a group, and we, I know I read something on it, so, okay. With that, we'll have a discussion, is there anybody okay with that, when we start reviewing those, because there was one policy statement that's in there about that. Okay, we'll keep moving then to new business, item number one is the Historic Landmarks Commission, there are two positions on the Historic Landmark Commission that will expire in August, both Jerry Farless and Chris Stossner desire to be reappointed, ask the board for action.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Jerry Farless and Chris Stossner to the Historic Landmarks Commission for another term.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to committee reports, I believe we have a few this evening, Sue Kelly is here, she's going to do a committee report for us with the Community Appearance Committee, so welcome, Sue.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Board of Commissioners, my name is Sue Kelly, 211 C Village Lane, and I rise tonight to speak on behalf of the Community Appearance Commission. As many of you may know, the Community Appearance Commission has embarked on two special projects that we're really pretty excited about, and I'll just mention very quickly the first one, and that is our butts campaign, keep, we want people to stop putting their cigarette butts around, so our group met last night, and we want to say thank you to members of the Board of Commissioners for enabling us to get something that we'll have available at National Night Out, and we'll see how that goes, but we're developing a couple of things. We're going to have a table at National Night Out, which is August the 7th, from 5:00 to 8:00, and we hope you'll come, it's a lot of fun, if you haven't ever been to one, but it's at Lowe's, by the way. We also want to mention that we're doing this with the Surf Rider Foundation, they're being extremely helpful, and they are in the process of putting some butt containers at some of our accesses, and we made a decision to do the accesses that have sponsorships in the hopes that that will help keep the cigarette butt containers emptied when necessary, but we're developing a number of things that you will all hear about, no doubt. Let me move now to our other big project, which is plastic bags. We bring before you a letter that we would like to send to folks in Kill Devil Hills to encourage businesses to use something that's not plastic. You'll see from the letter, I believe everybody has it in their packet, that we have clear evidence that the eight-year ban on plastic bags really made a difference, and I think we all know the impact on marine life as well as all the other things that are mentioned in this letter. So, I'd like to suggest that there's one small typo in this letter, and call your attention to the second paragraph, third line, where the sentence that starts their composition lends them tendency, I believe that should say a tendency or the tendency, so if you all are cool with this, ultimately, we'll change that. And I guess if there's any other suggestions that you have, we'll take those under consideration also. Anybody have any questions or anything that I can, can answer about the letter?
Mayor, when I read the, the letter, I thought it would be a good idea for the board to come out with this letter and show a strong support for the work that the CAC is doing, and have, send it under your signature, and I think that would maybe make a little more importance to people, understanding that we really want, want to see this stuff happen. So, that was my fault, that we should probably adopt something here at the board level, send it out, and say, yeah, we're all behind this 100%.
I'm open to that, if you, if you think that would send a stronger message, I don't want to steal the thunder from the great work that the committees done, but I'm happy to, certainly happy, I absolutely endorse and support it, so.
Well, certainly, it, it should go however you wish it to, but we did specifically put in the very first sentence, the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners, because it was important to us that it be very clear what the position of our town is.
Yeah, I think we're all 110%.
In addition to, do you intend to have your signature on this, is that the purpose?
Um, I have to look at the notes, but I don't think, we decided we're not all going to sign it, and I don't think I'll be signing it either, it would take up so much space if all the members, we wanted to have all the folks on the commission side, if, if the letter does come from the CAC.
I believe that consensus in the last meeting, we kind of got to the last draft, so it was just having a list of names to be, more user-friendly for the reader, I mean, our signatures sloppy enough, and other people's art, too, said, a lot of signature, we thought maybe, it created a little too much clutter, so we wanted to be nice and clear, that's how we listed the members' names.
Thank you, John, it fits very nicely on the page that way, too. Any, any other questions? Well, I'll, I'll leave it to you all to decide how you would like the letter to go, and if you want the letter to go, just, you know, just let us know, and if I may mention that the next meeting of the Community Appearance Commission is next Tuesday, the 24th, 8:30 a.m. in this room, and the next meeting of our butts committee, it's kind of a subcommittee of the CAC, except that we have some great people on it who are not actually on the CAC, they're just very interested and involved, and it, it's a great committee, and contingent on the availability of the room, which I haven't checked yet, we scheduled that for Wednesday, August 15th, at 6:00 p.m., hopefully in this room if it's available. Anything else that I can?
I appreciate all your hard work on this, Sue, you and your committees are doing a great job.
One more piece of CAC business, I got an email from Scott Lawrence from the Surf Riders Foundation, he just wanted to make sure that the board was comfortable with them proceeding to install the cigarette butt receptacles at each accesses, they wanted basically to get our permission before they go ahead and proceed with installation, I believe they have 10 designated accesses, and they already have volunteer groups signed up for maintenance purposes, and there really should not be, by design, a lot of extra burden put on our staff for cleaning, maintaining, they have people, volunteer groups that volunteer to do that on the Surf Riders behalf, but how does the board feel, or what is, Debbie, how should we, should we ask permission, or can we just make a consensus thing to say it's okay for them to proceed, or what should we do? I got this email today asking me to ask permission, I never have.
Would the board like to see the containers, if you check them?
So, yeah, I think that procedurally is to find out, yeah, is there consensus from the board, which I'm seeing nods, so yes, and then just to make sure that staff then have a point person, so even though they're saying they're going to maintain it, we need them to be able to have that communication, what do they look like, where is it going to be, and so staff can work with the actual operationalizing it, once the board's provided the consensus.
If you would just ask Scott to follow up, Sean Murphy, in coordinating the installation, and, and who's going to be responsible, that would be great.
Sure, we'll do.
Great, thanks, John. Back to the letter, just so we can, I think there's consensus to send it out, correct? Everybody's good with that? What if, in a spirit of compromise, because I like having the Community Appearance Committee's names on there, plus, you never know, when someone reads it, oh, I know so-and-so, right? You know, so I think that's nice, and, and they have put the work into it, but maybe I sign at the bottom, too, like, leave all your names, and then I can actually do my little signature thing.
That would only add substance to the letter.
Do we want to just, in a spirit of compromise, do that?
If your name and any of your names is on there, that adds...
Well, and we're all here, which is nice, it's official town letterhead, but, okay, so, good, we'll move.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, is that it would just, you know, really reinforce that this is, you know, we're all behind this.
I can't imagine that the Community Appearance Commission would have any problem with that, there's a couple of them here, if they don't like it, say so, but I think it's cool.
Hold on together, we'll get, we'll get this out.
All right, thanks so much, thanks for your support, and any of y'all want to participate in this, we're, we're kind of having fun, I mean... I mean, it's interesting. Two good things to pursue.
Great. So it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Hey, Randy, I think you have a report that you've provided for us.
Yes. The... As you recall, in 2015, the Board of Commissioners adopted a PPI, or Program for Public Information Plan Group, as part of the Town CRS, the Community Rating System, program. And the plans reviewed, updated, and updated annually. And we met last week to discuss several topics, including reviewing and revising our targeted audience who we send the information out to, et cetera, the public information efforts, key messages, to review the complete projects and incomplete projects, to create new outreach efforts, and to discuss outreach efforts for proposed flood maps, including information, educational opportunities, since there's such a new difference now. In attendance was myself, Willa Kelly, Skip Jones, Doug Steins, Michael Osteel, Randy Yor, and Jan Pressgraves, as well as the two staff members you see here. So after discussing the topics, we decided to continue with everything we had been doing and emphasizing and completing any incomplete projects that were important, especially educational opportunities in particular, because that's right now with the flood maps being like they are. That's our primary concern. We also recommended an educational video that will be developed to inform the public on the proposed flood maps and the implications it has on flood insurance and construction practices, engineering design, real estate, anything to do with that. So numerous meetings will be scheduled to be held at the Town Hall and other places to inform the public about this. And the committee recommended adding a new message, such as "Don't be flood foolish."
That's great. Thank you. Yeah, great. Okay, and I believe you had a...
Yeah, I have a short video. I think it's about three minutes, update on our Tourism Board recap.
Hi, everybody. Lee Nettles here with your Dare County Tourism Board Meeting Recap for the June 21st meeting, which happened in Roanoke Island. First up, we discussed the couple of events that had taken place at the Soundside Event Site in June. The first-ever food truck showdown, which was an overwhelming success for a first-time event. Estimates of around 1,500 people. We're already in discussions on how to bring that... How to improve the event and bring it back this fall, hopefully. So stay tuned for more information on that. Thanks to all who were able to attend. Also, we talked about the Soundside Fun Fair Carnival, which happened a couple of weeks later. Estimates are we had about 4,500 people turn out for that seven-day event. So hugely successful. The board gave a lot of consideration and discussion to these two events and how to improve them, but also just summer events in general and how to make sure that we plan accordingly. Next, we heard a report from the Budget Finance Committee with the April 2018 figures. Looking at occupancy, we saw a drop of 9%. The calendar year to date, January through April, is up 2%. On the meal side, we saw a drop of 7%. And for the calendar year, January through April, we're down 4%. Obviously, we don't like to see these negative figures. We dug into the information and have a few explanations for you. First of all, April 2017 had five Saturdays, whereas April 2018 only had four. Also, in April 2017, we saw some really strong numbers. Occupancy was up 48%. Meals was up 24%. So obviously, those are a couple of strong numbers to keep pace with. And an explanation for why those numbers were so huge in April of 2017 is the fact that Easter occurred later in the month. It happened on April 16th, as opposed to April the 1st this year. Following that report, Budget and Finance reviewed the proposed budget for fiscal year 1819. We are on a July through June fiscal year, as you recall. Following discussion and review, the Tourism Board voted unanimously to adopt the budget ordinance for the fiscal year 1819 budget. If you're interested in seeing the budget, you can go to our website, outerbanks.org. Go to the bottom of the page, look for the Partners link, and then follow the link for Statistics and the final budget for fiscal year 1819. If you have any questions, please feel free to give us a call or send us an email. We're happy to review that with you. This concluded the business for the Dare County Tourism Board at its June 21st meeting. As is accustomed, we will be taking off the month of July. We'll resume our meeting in August 16th, and look forward to seeing you there. Hope you have a prosperous and healthy summer. Please let us know if there's anything that the Visitors Bureau can do for you. Thank you.
I'd like to add that on that food truck showdown, there was about twice as many people as they had anticipated. And some plans for once in the future, and they're considering doing another one in the fall because this was so successful. They want to extend the hours a little bit because it was kind of compressed, and like, everybody came at the same time. And it got to be kind of a... There was crowds and long lines and such. So they're thinking about starting it earlier, like, maybe 11:00 in the morning and running a little bit later in the afternoon. And due to the success of it, they'll probably have a lot more participants. You'll have trucks coming from other places who have heard about it and heard it was successful. I talked to several people who were there, including our daughter. And everybody had a great time. They're anxious to get back to another. So I think it's a good thing.
I went to that. It rained and rained, and those people still came out. So I think the potential is enormous for what this could be if everything really lines up well. If it was a bad weather, a bad weather forecast, you could still, we're anxious to check it out.
Yeah, some of the places ran out of food, and they were sending runners out to go get back to their restaurant, get food. And, yeah, it's pretty cool. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
I got a couple of quick things. On July 17th last Tuesday, the SAVI task force met. The SAVI task force kind of reduces their schedule in the summertime. They took June off, they're taking off August as well. So the July meeting was really more of kind of like a reviewing success from the first half of the calendar year and trying to talk about some things we'd like to do for the second half of the calendar year when the summer's over. And I also would like to remind everybody that Wednesday, July 25th, 6:00 p.m. here at Town Hall, will be the Kill Devil Hills Police Department Community Watch meeting. I believe this is the first one. And I'm glad I'm being here, and I'm really... I hope we get some nice, strong turnout. So I'd like to hear what people are seeing in their neighborhoods and what their concerns are. So everyone's encouraged to attend.
Thank you. Anything else? We'll move then to Commissioners Agenda.
And the only comment I had was also about the 25th meeting. I think that the police department's done a fantastic job of advertising that and getting it out on all the social media. And it... They're certainly a fine opportunity for people to be able to come in and show their interest. And hopefully, they will.
I'd just like to, one more time, thank Boy Scouts Troop 116 and Cub Scouts Pack 116 for organizing and executing the car wash fundraiser for Fireman Louis Rodriguez. Thank you Kill Devil Hills Fire Department and Collington Fire Department for volunteering and really helping at that event. And also, Chief Tilly, thank you for hosting us back on July 6th for the check presentation. My son's a Cub Scout, so I'm pretty involved in that group. And that was a really... Circumstances are sad, but to see our community come together so strong and teach our boys kind of what community service is all about is something I really appreciate. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Fireman.
Nothing to say?
Sorry, not talking about the Community Watch thing. And I don't know if people realize this, but it's a product of mine because we just went on vacation and came back. We come back Sunday. We always make a point to the police department that we're out of town. It's a good thing. And, you know, they may keep a specialized for you. And they'll do it for anybody, not just Commissioners. There's quite a few people that do it, I understand. There was one small problem, though. When we came back, we found out the tenant had hot watered a Camaro while we were gone. Put a lot of miles on, had to get an extra oil.
You had to put brakes on it, too, didn't you?
Had to get new brakes today. I wonder why.
Anything else this evening? We'll move into Mayor's Agenda. Two things that I have this evening. The first is a proclamation for National Night Out. We're going to have our big National Night Out celebration on Tuesday, October 7th, at 5:00 p.m. in the Lowe's parking lot. This is a great opportunity for citizens and visitors to come together for an evening of fun with activities. Crime prevention education will be there. Normally, our fire auxiliary is there with hot dogs and munchies and really great community events. So thank you to our police department for hosting this and pulling this together. And in the packet is the proclamation for National Night Out on August 7th. Chiefs, anything we want to add to this for tonight? You good?
Okay, just a point of correction. You said August.
Oh, my gosh, I see. Okay, August, August, August. Thank you. We would have missed it. Yes, August 7th. Thanks. And that's a Tuesday night.
Some of the bad news.
I think it's great news. I got a text message last night that the dunking booth is out of order. There's like a hole in it. I did not do it. But really, I was not disappointed at all to hear that news. But hopefully, they'll come up with something to replace it.
Well, we heard there's a fucking Bronco, too. We can borrow from somebody.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the proclamation for Tuesday, August 7th, for National Night Out in Kill Devil Hills. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And one other thing this evening. Wanted to update everybody on the curbside recycling services in Kill Devil Hills. If you currently participate in curbside recycling, you received a letter from Bay Disposal and Recycling stating that due to plummeting recycling market, curbside recycling rates are going to increase. The letter did not state the new rate, but it did suggest that customers, if they didn't like the thought of the new rate, could convert their recycling bins into garbage containers. After seeing this announcement, our Public Services Department Director, Steve Albright, followed up with the company. And since the town has a franchise agreement with Bay Disposal, any potential rate increase will not affect Kill Devil Hills customers until the existing franchising agreements, terms, and conditions are met and agreed to by the town. So our current franchise agreement is in effect through April of 2019. So in the short term, between now and then, there cannot be any changes. That being said, they have yet to go up on our rates since we started this program. I think it's an incredibly valuable program for the town to have this recycling. So I really hope between now and October 19th that we can work with them to look at whatever needs to be done to... I'm sorry, April 2019. I'm throwing out crazy dates here. Anyway, between now and April 2019, that we can work something out with them to keep that service. But I understand that their costs are going up and that we're going to have to look at that. But I wanted to reassure the citizens. There's been lots of questions. I fielded a few just in passing from folks. What does this mean? Because the letter was really vague and not consistent with what our franchise agreement is. So hopefully, that provides some clarification for folks. I hope I don't have to keep talking dates because I apologize for mixing them all up. That's all I have this evening. We'll move on to Town Manager's Agenda.
Nothing this evening?
Thank you. Okay, Town Attorney's Agenda. Consent Agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Five items on the consent agenda this evening. First, amendments from the June 27th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting. Second, the May 2018 monthly report. Budget amendment number one is to make a correction for a typo in the original budget document. Item number four, inter-local building inspector agreements. One between the town of Kill Devil Hills and Dax Head, and the second in between the town of Kill Devil Hills and Dare County. And then number five is Captain Mark Evans. As we all know, is retiring from the Kill Devil Hills Police Department on August 1st this year. He has made a request to purchase a service sidearm and badge pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 2187.2. The statute requires the governing board's authorization for the award and determine the price of the weapon. The statute places no requirement for the badge to be purchased. It may be given to the retiring officer. Approval of the consent agenda will report the board's authorization to allow Captain Evans to purchase his service sidearm for the amount of $1. And staff recommends approval of consent agenda as presented. And the motion will be in order.
So moved.
Sure.
Any discussion? I'll spot you the dollar. Congratulations, and thank you. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so with this, we will now move to start our work session with the planning board. We're going to relocate. We'll turn our mics to face the table, if you guys don't mind. And then if the planning board members would just join us in any seating arrangement at the table, please. Okay. So again, thank you all for joining us. And I also appreciate all the work that you have been doing as a planning board on our land use plan. It's been a process and continues to be, but we really appreciate the time that you've been spending, not only in meetings, but outside of meetings, to prepare and go through this. So tonight's purpose is specifically to work through the policy statements that we all have a copy of. And just for a frame of reference, the kind of the first group of policy statements that's in Table 1. And it pretty much runs from 1 to the mid-50s, I believe. Those were actually adopted back in 2009. So a previous board adopted those. But that is what we've been operating on, those policy statements, since then. So as part of this overall land use plan revision adoption, our task is to go back through those as just a starting point for point of reference. And Meredith has also included what's in Table 2 is additional policy statements. Some of those may, we may find as we work through this, may be best served replacing a policy statement that used to be in Table 1. So we can... And we'll go through that as we move through the PowerPoints. So my recommendation on how we approach this tonight, because there's 60-some odd policy statements, is hopefully, everyone's had a chance to read them. So we will not read them verbatim because hopefully, that's already been done. But as we just work through them, if there's one that we come across that quickly, no one has any recommendation to change because there's not any change, then we'll just move through to the next one. But anytime you see one as we move through, we'll just go page by page, that we do want to stop, have comments. If you're not comfortable leaving it is, then we need to bring it up and talk about it because the goal would be to get a consensus on a policy statement or removing that one as we move forward. Does that make sense, kind of our plan of attack?
Yep.
Okay. And for flow, Meredith had whichever screen... Okay. And for flow, Meredith, whichever screen catches your eye, she's got this in kind of a PowerPoint format, where she's gonna be, you know, we'll walk through it. And if we do have a change or delete, if we want to delete something or whatnot, she's gonna be able to do that as we work through it.
Thank you.
Yeah, that looks a little bit better. Okay, any questions before we get rolling? Meredith, anything that you wanted to set in a frame of reference that I didn't touch on? Are we good to roll?
No, as, as we go through, if they're Table 2, which is some of the newer strategies that the consultant and staff have worked together on, if there is a similar one, it is referenced in the PowerPoint. So, you will be able to flip to the new one and decide if you want to combine them, delete them, move them. So, I, I tried to make all those references happen, so we'll go from there.
Will they both appear, or will they just reference it and we should keep the other table handy?
I would keep your other table handy. I can absolutely scroll down to it without any issue at all, but they're not gonna be dual-screened.
That's, that's all I was asking.
I'm good, I'm not that good. Mike, you're taking me to a new level. Now I'm gonna have to figure out how to do this.
I apologize.
The tables we got tonight, it's basically the same as what you'd already given us, what we've already read and made notes on?
So, Table 1 is absolutely the same. Table 2 has been revised, but your notes are probably still valid, because it's really just a consolidation of policies. Except for one, and I'll, I'll go over that specifically.
Yeah, that's a great question. I asked that earlier. Okay, alright, so we'll jump on to page 1 of Table 1. There's four, four policies there. Does anyone have one? Anyone have any?
Keep them all.
You okay with that?
I have a question, of course.
Yeah, no, that's good.
Number 3.
Okay.
It has, the town requires private owners of land and maritime forests to retain the natural wooded condition of their property.
Indeed.
So, you can't build on it?
It has very specific limits that you can only build, you can only remove in the driveway and in the footprint of the house. You can't clear the lot. It's subject to.
That's not what this says, though. I mean, so could that be amended to say something to that effect? There's restrictions that the town imposes on, on clearing. But if you read this, it says, "The town requires private owners of land and maritime forests to retain the natural wooded condition of their property." It's basically telling you to leave your land alone.
I agree.
That's exactly the policy.
The wording is, or does it say requires?
So, Meredith, if you use the language that you stated when you were describing it, where there's restrictions, the, the town imposes certain restrictions, something.
I just don't think that should be a policy to somebody to come back to.
Well.
As a way of stopping somebody from developing their, their own law.
Right.
That's being known that you can develop property, you just have to do it under certain guidelines.
Under certain, right, certain guidelines or restrictions, yeah.
Natural wooded condition of their property in accordance with zoning regulations. Zoning regulations outline what you can and can't.
You comfortable with that change?
Yeah.
Okay, yes. Okay, no, good. Alright, everybody good with that? Okay, alright. So, let's move it on to page 2 then. I wanted to bring up something on number 8, but does anyone have something before we get to number 8?
Number 5.
Okay.
Second line from the bottom, "The town supports," I believe, should say "the town requires." But we're working on that.
We don't require. We're not currently, we're not required.
But isn't this a, a policy and are, is supporting enough?
Well, if we don't absolutely require it, we can't state that we do. And we wouldn't want to put that, kind of to Eddie's point on the previous one, we wouldn't want to state we're requiring something if we don't truly require it, because then we put it in policy and we're not living up to what we're stating.
But we are moving to.
This is a different matter.
Subject systems.
Alright.
Oh, are you referencing what we talked about earlier tonight? Oh, with the storm related to previous concrete, which this is specific to septic.
This is subject to.
Okay.
Okay.
Sheila, I would like to, number 6. There is a very similar policy in our revised, number 70.
Okay, can we all skip then to number 70? That would be in the handout from today.
Page 17. Oh, today?
Great.
Number 70 goes on page 17.
Great, okay. So, everyone found what Meredith's referencing?
Number 70.
Number 70.
On page 17.
On page 17. So, Meredith, you are, are you proposing that 6? Really, we just need one. You wouldn't need 6 and 70.
You would not need 6 and 70.
So, we want to eliminate 6.
They have a lot of, they have a lot of the same verbiage, but this one has a little bit more emphasis on the best management practices and our enforcement of the regulations of commercial and industrial and things like that, which are non-single family.
Okay. So, we're looking to see is there consensus to delete number 6, but we will add number 70 in its place.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Number 8, if, is, are we okay with going on to number 8?
I have a question on 7. What's, what's the opposition to mooring about this public trust waters?
I don't oppose that, I guess.
There was a history. Yes. Where's Debbie?
I'm over here.
You may remember it. It was right when I first started, but there was, there was two vessels that moored off of Hayman. One was homemade and one was a sailboat. They were there in the early to mid 90s. One gentleman actually put a mailbox on Bay Drive as a boat. And they were, they were basically squatting right about 15, 20 yards off of the Hayman Pier. And it, it became a sanitation issue, because they weren't.
Understood.
And therefore, when the, the 97 plan was done, this policy was put in by the board at that time.
Well, to me, a mooring of a boat is a place to tie it up, not necessarily live on it. So, we're a waterfront town, and for someone not to be able to moor their boat behind their houses, if they don't have a pier, you know, that's really their only option. And it's mooring buoys are subject to permitting by CAMA. They just can't live on. I mean, that's seems to be what's happened at Hayman, is somebody lived there. Can we differentiate that? Who actually enforces that? Who would actually enforce going around and whose boats this?
The boost of water quality would do some bad, at least.
Are they doing it? I mean, I know of a couple that are moored somewhere, you know, off of Bay Drive.
They're, if it's a problem for any kind of shellfish waters, they will.
Maybe it should be a timeline. I don't know how long you can. So, if you got somebody coming in town with their boat and they want to moor in your backyard for three days, would, I don't see that an issue. Florida had a big problem with floating homes, because they couldn't tax them.
The town opposes floating homes. I mean, it's, it's the mooring of vessels that seems to be, mooring of vessels, living.
Should we just look into, is there a certain amount of day limit that they can moor a vessel?
Can't you just say live aboard vessels, mooring of live aboard vessels?
Well, you can't do that either, really, because again, you got a 22-foot sailboat, got here for a week, you can live on it.
What's the objection to that?
I want to ask her. Don't have a comment?
Under, under the CAMA regulations, if, if you want any support or you want to regulate mooring fields, you have to have a mooring field plan. We don't have that. That would be the more appropriate thing to say the town will investigate establishing or developing a mooring field plan. But the policy right now really shouldn't stand as the way it is. If you, if you are concerned about mooring fields and you want to do something about them, then you need to establish a mooring field plan.
So, if we want, yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry?
No, you go ahead.
So, when you talk about mooring fields, I think about maybe more of a harbor situation like Mania, where you've got three or four boats moored out there right now. So, do they, they have a mooring plan, field plan?
I can't answer that.
I don't know. Seems like that's getting a little bit more involved than what we're really talking about here. I don't know what the direction would have to be.
So, without a mooring field plan from CAMA, all mooring is prohibited. Is that correct?
If you want to regulate it.
If you want to regulate it, thank you.
If you want to have any support from Coast Guard or CAMA or in your own regulations, then you, you need to have a mooring field plan.
I was under the understanding that you had to get CAMA permit, it might be a CAMA permit, easy one to get, but to put a mooring buoy in a certain location.
No, without a mooring field.
You can leave the policy in here that you oppose floating homes and mooring vessels in waters adjacent to Kill double Hills, but there, there are a number of holes in that. For example, what do you mean by adjacent to Kill double Hills? Is it adjacent 100 yards or 500 yards? What does adjacent mean? So, it's a weak policy, as it is now stated.
So, we have in our general offenses, section 130.04 for the town. That's the section called "Living, Residing, or Sleeping in Open Air or Vehicles." It says, "No person shall engage in any act of living, residing, or sleeping at night in the open air or in an automobile or vehicle." Perhaps we can address the concern of people living in a boat in that, in our general, and then maybe not here.
Maybe you just delete that.
That's just the thing.
Yeah.
I, you know, I have a problem with what if you have friends coming and they want to be in the sound here, adjacent to Kill double Hills, visiting you, and they sleep on their boat temporarily? I mean, so are they breaking our law now?
Well, are we glad to have friends?
We also don't let people like pull their RV into a driveway and sleep in it either.
So, we, we do have to be.
It would be a no at this point.
Yeah, I think this actually would be for a big discussion to think about this. And the reason we don't right now allow people to come pull an RV in Kill double Hills and sleep in that is, can you imagine people would start, I mean, I could just see tons of people renting out driveways and having, so.
There's a difference between temporary anchorage, somebody visiting someone who lives on the shore, and putting a boat or a floating home out there permanently.
Absolutely. And I think to, to your point, I mean, even though we wouldn't allow the visiting guests to sleep in a driveway in a mobile home, our ordinance doesn't allow it now. I, I do, it's up for public discussion probably on, if someone came and docked at your house with your boat, you know, dock and all. But I think we also would want to protect our town from having anyone come in that doesn't know and pulls up on Bay Drive and someone in front of somebody's home that they don't know, and they're just, I'm gonna vacation here and climb out on their private property. And so, I think we want to be cautious on that.
It's called public trust waters for a reason.
Can I interject something?
Public trust waters.
Something else? I would suggest that on the, the question of floating homes.
That's all of their law.
On the question of floating homes, let, let us work with the staff and revise that policy to something that might address the concerns, because what you, ma'am?
I don't know what the concerns are. I haven't gotten that clear yet.
Well, but we'll have to, but my point I'm leading up to is, whatever you decide tonight, it's not the last time you're gonna see these policies. You're gonna get them back in a final draft of the plan.
Sure. So, let's try as a group now to figure out what is our biggest issue with this, so then I can give some guidance to Meredith to then work on that. So.
I think the big difference is whether it's temporary or permanent, and also how far out is Kill double Hills regulate, because most boats that you're gonna stay on, you're not gonna be close enough to the shore around here to be close to Kill double Hills. You're gonna probably be further out and then have a tender that you're gonna bring in and out to someone's dock or wherever. But, I mean, how much of that order does Kill double Hills actually regulate?
May, may I ask a question? Meredith, the ETJ doesn't extend into the water, into the sound, does it? Because your jurisdiction, in terms of regulatory jurisdiction, doesn't go any further than your ETJ.
What is the ETJ?
Extraterritorial jurisdiction.
So, how far does that have to stop?
I don't know that off the top of my head. I don't have that information.
Ma'am?
I don't have that information on the top of my head.
I don't, I, I may be wrong, but I don't think your zoning jurisdiction extends into the sound. And so, really, all, you know, you, regular, on a regulatory basis, unless it's in your jurisdiction, zoning jurisdiction, you, you don't have any real option unless you, other than express the fact that you don't want from the residential boats anchored off the shore. But, so you would have to, as a part of a mooring field plan, have to provide the extension of your ETJ.
I guess as far as docks, Kill double Hills would regulate a dock that's attached to the land, is that correct?
Yes.
CAMA does.
CAMA. You gotta get a building permit to go up here, but you have to get permission from CAMA. Right, but I'm guessing if you had somebody permanently tied up to a dock living there, then they would have Kill double Hills. I'm guessing they'd have some kind of jurisdiction over that, as opposed to a mooring field.
Well.
It seems objection is people living on board.
Right. So, what if, if number 7, if we just said the town opposes floating homes and the long-term mooring of vessels for living? As living, yeah. I mean, would that suffice?
So, that means that somebody in the town, if somebody is out there for, let's say, a couple weeks, just visiting, are we gonna run them off?
No. Currently, the way we operate with everything is it's complaint-driven. So, if that becomes a problem, at least then we could be consistent with our land use plan that we, that's not what we're encouraging, long-term. It is vague, what's long-term. Long-term could be, if they're really annoying, whatever their behavior is, comes shorter term to someone. But at least it gives us something to turn to that we've agreed on as an option.
I don't want to lose sight of if I'm fortunate enough to have a sound from a house, which I'm not. And I'm an avid sailor, going to what Skip says, it's skinny water out there, but there is water where that boat can come and moor. And if it's my boat, I sure would like to see it behind my house. I don't see what the objection to that is. It seems the objection here is that people live on it.
Right.
So, that's the fighting thing. I don't think us as a waterfront town want to say you can't moor your boat behind your house.
Behind your house, but I don't think that you lived on Bay Drive and it was somebody else's boat behind your house.
Well, I do think.
The complaint-driven.
I do think that my understanding is that mooring buoys are subject to permitting by CAMA. I need to confirm that.
I think you're right.
Because for that reason, you know, you can't drop in a channel, you know, for those, those type of purposes. But it is public trust waters, just like a highway. You can't stop. You can't say, "I don't like your boat, get it out of my view."
Keep in mind, if it's navigable water, under the jurisdiction of the Coast Guard, the ultimate authority is really. the ultimate authority is really the Coast Guard. You may remember probably fifteen years ago, somebody in Hyde County put a structure on a barge and towed it into the middle of Silver Lake and dropped anchor. And it took a couple of years to get that thing out of the middle of Silver Lake. So, you know, you, you can, you know, even if you have, I said a mooring field, even if you have a mooring field plan under your jurisdiction, which would have to be in your ETJ, which I don't think goes into the sound, the, the only thing you can do is really express an opinion and hope that opinions may help you down the road. But if, if you want to have any regulatory authority, then you're gonna have to extend the ETJ.
Can we just word that it says the town opposes permanent living on moored vessels or whatever, something along those lines? So we're not saying you can't do it, but we're opposed to it. But have it a permanent type of.
I think that would work.
Meredith, do you have enough guidance from that to tweak something? We'll see this again. So the, the, the opposition is in dwelling, is using it.
Opposition of floating homes and residing upon moored vessels, mooring vessels and public trust basis.
I think the permanence of it needs to be established. Because if you do have somebody staying at your home in their boat, I think that should be.
Or someone comes off Beadham Coastal Waterway for a weekend. Comes to visit TAMA, kill Devil Hills and spend their money.
They probably have every right.
Yeah, Beadham Coastal Waterways, right there.
Toss that anchor.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it's probably happening.
But how are they gonna get off the boat to the ground?
If you have a tender.
But what's the.
Where do you land?
Dock Street.
Okay. And it's probably, mooring buoy is different than throwing an anchor out too, so.
Okay. Pretty good, well.
Pretty close.
Added some, yeah, I think we're pretty close to that. Okay, thanks for bringing that up. Number eight. We've had a lot of discussion back and forth over the past few years with Fresh Pond. I just thought this was a time to, to bring it up. I don't know that we need to make the language change here, but, you know, we have entertained some, and I believe we've had meetings and gone on record that we were, as a town, were in support of looking at utilizing Fresh Pond again for recreational, limited recreational use. I believe that was the term that when Aaron's here, yes?
It's a reference I forgot to make. If you looked at number sixty-nine, I mean sixty-five on page.
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Page sixteen, there is a policy over Fresh Pond that addresses what you said. So if that would be the pleasure of the group, we would delete number eight. And. It's not good to me.
Meredith, you know how NAGSAD looks at it?
I have not been part of those meetings, so you would probably need to ask someone to ask.
The, the latest I heard is they were not supportive of doing anything.
Allowing anything?
That we've been at a standstill because of that, yes. I do not know that they've revisited with their most recent board composition.
It's my understanding that was the decision, that was the position of the current board.
The current.
That was stated at their work session.
They will have nothing, I mean, just retain it for emergency water use or whatever?
There wasn't a lot of information given as to why.
Well, then mine's gonna be a quiet annoyance because I want to fast track it. I think we need, I think we need to have a recreation facility around Fresh Pond. I remember when, when I was growing up as a kid, we, we used to always go to Fresh Pond. And as a matter of fact, I've skied in Fresh Pond. We used to haul boats down there and, and everybody went for the weekend and had a good time. I think there's plenty of room now for a passive recreation, where you could have a, a walking path or jogging path or something to that nature, where people could enjoy the open area. I know when I first got on board, that was one of the first things that I had brought up back in eighty-nine, I think it was. And, you know, we talked about it then. I think we, I think we missed the boat on it. I think we really need to have some sort of passive recreation near Fresh Pond.
And we toured that site some years ago. Steve was there. Steve Albright and Brian, I think, was there. And was Aaron McCall there? I don't recall Steve. Was he there with us? So we went back and looked at it. And at that time, it was under our impression something was going, could be done.
Well, Aaron had actually mapped out paths for access down to it.
Fishing and like you said, passive, maybe fishing, walking paths and stuff.
And we mentioned Aaron. Aaron's with the Nature Conservancy, so we had met with him a few times and where we could use parking there. And then he mapped out paths. He even was gonna get a group to volunteer, some students that come in the spring and help clear the path. And, but then we ran into a red block with the town.
We could still be in favor of doing something if they were comfortable.
Yeah, I think we.
Right, whether they are or not.
Right.
Absolutely. And maybe through some advocacy and having some one-on-one meetings with some other commissioners, you know, we can see if we can get somewhere. But I, I do like the, the language in sixty-five better. Yes, go ahead.
We could almost, you still want to support protecting the area, which is the first sentence or so on the first, on eight. But if you deleted the ten, the last sentence, you could almost add the two together and you've got a redefined policy.
Okay. So the, the recommendation is then to keep the first sentence of eight and just put that before what's existing in sixty-five?
Yeah, we want to keep it as natural as possible and definitely, we don't want industrial use. I think the two together.
And an initial passive recreation that would be fine.
Okay. I think that's a great suggestion. Meredith, did you catch that? Okay. All right, everybody good with? Okay. All right, so on, anything else on page two? Okay, and move on to page three. Anyone have anything on page three?
You'll see on the PowerPoint that number eleven has been combined with strategy number seventy-one. There's the language, a lot of the language was mimicked, and there was some additional language added that should be on the last page. Eighteen.
So we could strike eleven there.
I mean, do we really need to say the town supports enforcement of one of our ordinances? As a policy?
Well, that's why I think we can get rid of eleven. And then seventy-one is really becoming pertinent because with the, what's likely gonna happen, well, what is gonna happen with the flood maps. I think it does state what we're gonna do about establishing higher, higher regulatory standards.
Should we delete eleven?
No, strike eleven and leave seventy-one. I'm sorry, I thought you said leave eleven. Sorry. I thought you said leave eleven, yeah, that's right.
I'm sorry, you did.
Great.
Not your nice eleven.
That's terrible. Okay.
I have another question. On number seventeen, as a matter of fact, we talked about.
Circle that for Chip, yes.
Architectural standards.
Yeah.
I think it's something we all look at. I mean, we're way far from doing anything, I think. I think, because it says here, other than single-family duplex, maybe we should just say we support architectural design standards for development.
You could say.
He's talking about, he's talking.
Some multi-family.
So you do tell you're talking, I can't build my house, my single-family home the way I want?
Exactly.
Yeah. You'd have to specify multifamily or whatever. But you can't tell me I can't build my single-family home with my lot the way I want to build it.
Oh, you can.
Not currently.
Well, you could if we wanted to go in that round. I'm not saying that we do, but I'm just making sure that we know what we're saying.
Mr. Holland. State statutes prohibit you from dictating architectural design on single-family.
Thank you. NAGSAD had a great incentive, BAFAL's a great incentive, and that was pretty much struck down when they get.
The statutes were revised, I think, four years ago, three or four years ago.
The only thing that I would caution you about is to make a blanket statement as to development and redevelopment. I think that this supports the possibility of adding architectural requirements. But when you look in some of our light industrial zones, we allow manufacturing and warehousing, and it's counterintuitive to, to make them sit or shake a building that they're welding in and have a roof design and things like that. I understand what Chip's saying, and I think you can isolate multifamily or townhouse development. But I think the policy actually would support any movement towards that direction. But I would caution you in doing it as a town-wide thing because of the fact that we have industrial uses and that would be.
Why are duplexes?
They're under the residential building code. When you go over three units, you become commercial building code. And it's a totally different set of requirements. And that's where the zoning code has drawn the line to be consistent with the North Carolina Building Code.
It says we support it or encourage it or something.
And it does say that.
And that's what we, I think we all feel that way. It's just.
So we're good with it.
Two. Leave it as is.
That's what I said. Restricting.
A quick question.
I guess because it's not there, it's included, because it's not excluded. Right? Because it's not excluded, it's included.
Okay, are you guys, I'm sorry, proposing to change something?
No.
No, you're just. Okay, all right. So we'll leave seventeen. You had a question about thirteen?
Yeah, but has, has there ever been a, an identified area of archaeological historical?
Yes.
Beyond Bright Rose.
We don't have a choice about that, to be honest with you, but.
What's your point? When they put that in, there's a little green section on your map here. They found some sort of. Arrowhead, thank you.
Meredith.
Now it's an archaeological site, and it cannot be disturbed. But the state's gonna come in and do that, whether you have it in your plan or not.
That's one of the history. I just thought I knew an answer.
Clarify that after, when this refers to protection of identified archaeological sites, you don't know where they are. They are not publicized. The state of North Carolina knows where those archaeological sites are. So what this policy is really saying, that if you're gonna undertake something at, at a public or a town of Kill Devil Hills project, or you're gonna approve a development, that you'll check with the state to verify that there's no archaeological site or historic site involved in that development. I'm talking about something like a major subdivision of the town going out and building a new fire station. That you're gonna be sure that you're not disturbing a identified archaeological site or a historic site, especially if you're doing something that involves the expenditure of state or federal funds. Because if it does, you're required to do that.
Not only that, sometimes they don't know until you start developing. The state doesn't know where they all are. So sometimes they don't know it till you start developing a site, and then that's happened quite a few times.
I don't think anyone has any issue. Okay, for sake of time, yep.
Oh, item twelve there. It's, the town supports the construction and revegetation of oceanfront sand dunes and opposes the mining of island dunes. What, what is an island dune?
We have a definition, our zoning ordinance, inland dune systems are island dunes. And we have a prohibition about mining. We had an incident where someone had a piece of property back, I don't even want to tell you where, and they were using the dune system, filling dump trucks and using it as fill on other pieces of property and destroying inland dune systems. And so we have an ordinance against the mining or destruction of inland dunes. And it's defined in our.
I have a picture of it. So that's specifically for a mining operation, as in digging and taking it somewhere else?
That's what it says.
Not grading it out on your own piece of property?
No.
Okay.
It's removing it and taking it to someone else's piece of property.
Before you move too far off to this page, fifteen. Town supports the concept of wildlife management within town limits. I think we all know that we're probably getting an increase of animals of all types. We're getting foxes, we're getting coyotes, and we're even getting hot cats. My question is, probably not so much as changing this, because I'm really pretty good with that, but my, my question is, has the town ever looked at partnering or talking with NAGSAD? They had been doing some work with coyotes. Have, have we looked at that, working with them?
We had the same, we both had scheduled presentations, really kind of back-to-back for education and awareness, but not on a mitigation plan or a management plan.
They'll, they'll, you know, they'll.
The word I heard, they trapped the seventeen in NAGSAD, and the naturalists say that they'll be back in very quick amount of time. And the guy that came here, I wish I could remember his name, told us that they're here and we're here.
I think anything we could do with them would help, you know, just, that's the only comment I have.
I think he, I think his point was that getting rid of them is not optional. Because you could get rid of them, they're back.
I think if you've got a nuisance animal, then you call.
Yeah, right.
Well, even they'll, they'll do something to get rid of that animal, but typically you're not gonna get rid of it. I think we're seeing more just because of all development, like the trouble with the deer. I mean, they're, they're running out of places to live. So we're seeing more in neighborhoods, I think, in our town.
We have a lot of foxes as well.
We're on your policy. Yeah, we're, we're, no change to the policy.
No change to it.
Yes, all right. Point of comment. Okay, are we okay to move to page four? Page four.
Nineteen, I don't think you can support impact fees anymore.
You're on number nineteen.
Impact fees, may I? Exactions and impact fees can only be, impact fees is probably not a good term. But basically, we're talking about exactions in a new development. If you require, which you do, roads in right-of-way be dedicated to the town or they be private roads, that's an exaction. You're taking land from the developer for a public purpose. So this policy probably needs to be reworded because we, the town supports the legal actions you can take in that you may require reservation of a park or land for open space or a park in a development. But you can't require a developer to dedicate land for a regional park that's gonna serve beyond the needs of that development. Because that becomes, crosses the line, it then becomes an exaction. So what we, we really legally are talking about and can do here is what you require somebody developing a property to commit, dedicate, give to the town to serve that development. You can't require the. Yes, ma'am?
We're talking about impact fees for our, our water and wastewater and things like that. And in our recent budget, because of the, you can't use impact fees anymore, I would recommend on this one, the four, the, the town supports exaction and system development fees, which is our new word for impact fees, for developers for required services, infrastructure improvement, and necessary to do, address impacts created by the development. At this time, we don't require parks to be built or anything else. So I, I would recommend that we simply change impact fee to system development fee, which is the word we're now using in our, in our budget and all other published material, if that works for the.
I, I, that's, what I was endeavoring to say is. That's, what I was endeavoring to say is what Meredith just said. But, you know, the exaction is fine if we all understand that it's an exaction of like a public right of way or a water easement, line easement, or sewer line easement. That's, that's legal. But if you go beyond that, it's not.
Okay, so everyone good then that we're going to strike impact fees and replace it with system development?
I think that's just a bad word now.
Yeah, it is, it's become taboo.
And thank you for pointing that, whoever brought that up, thank you. Thanks, Skip.
Thanks, Skip. Twenty-two, can we just eliminate that? We have a policy that we can work with our politicians.
Yeah, is there any necessity of having twenty-two?
Not that it ever happened.
No.
Okay.
Delete.
Delete, ready consensus to delete twenty-two? Okay, moving on to page five. Twenty.
Yes.
Twenty-three, we referenced when we're talking about the storm protection project, Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, and Nags Head, but we didn't Southern Shores and Duck if we're naming everybody, and Maple Spade as well.
I agree with that. So you're saying.
Add Southern Shores and Ducks. Okay, speeding as well. You have anything else on those two? Okay, we move on to page six. Five, you have a reference here on twenty-five, Meredith?
Number sixty-six. And this is almost diametrically different than the one you're looking at. This one, the. Number sixty-six is the town opposes, is opposed to seismic testing, offshore drilling, and other exploration for or products of either oil or gas and on the location of onshore support facilities for such activities. This has been a resolution by the board commissioners, I know at least twice. It is also was, I think, ninety-three percent overwhelming support for the opposition of offshore drilling in our land use plan survey. And staff would recommend that we replace number twenty-five with number sixty-six.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I'd absolutely agree. I mean, it's consistent with what we've been doing, the position we've had.
Yep.
Okay, so consensus to strike twenty-five, delete twenty-five, or replace it with sixty-six.
On twenty-six, is the, the last sentence has kind of moved right now since that main transition line's been built. That was before, that came up when the.
It, it, it is a little bit, but if they wanted to do another one, it's still in here. Because that doesn't go absolutely the whole length of town.
Down, down, right? And also, the town opposes placement of public and multi-service energy facilities. Solar and wind, does that include, you can't do solar and wind?
We have an alternate energy promotion, and I don't know that that, I don't know that that's the same thing.
We have one reference somewhere.
We have, we have alternate.
We have a policy in here somewhere.
Number sixty is alternate energy. Use of alternate energy for the resident and non-residential or to accommodate the installation of equipment resources.
Number sixty. Number sixty references the alternative energy resources, six, six zero. Mike's question was specifically related to the alternative energy.
It's the top of page fifteen, it's number sixty, and I have it on the screen if it's easier for you guys.
An alternate energy source would be a solar farm. Solar panel farm, which I can't, somebody might show up and want to put one here, but I can't imagine where they'd put it.
But they, we also in that policy supported offshore.
Wind farms or?
Wind farms, I believe.
Wind farms. There are other policies that specifically address offshore drilling and seismic testing.
Yeah, we already took care of that one.
So that, that's not, I don't interpret twenty-five to address offshore drilling or seismic testing.
We're on twenty-six.
I meant to say twenty-six, I'm sorry.
No, I think he's saying is, is, is the substation, what if we got a wind, wind field and they wanted to put a, a energy facility, other than carefully planned substations? I believe that would probably be a substation, Mike. I don't think that they could.
But I think if that comes up, sixty kind of addresses that, though. So.
So no change to twenty-six, is that right?
I don't, I don't see the need for something else.
I don't think so.
Yeah, okay, anyone else see anything?
On twenty-nine, has the town ever looked at actually funding the recycling? I know that just came up in that letter saying he did.
He did do a study. Yep, that's right, they're sending me to Steve, and we ran the numbers. Obviously, I would think if, if for some reason they came back and said we're just not interested, I'd want us to relook at it again.
Because apparently according to a lot of the interest in recycling is down, therefore, they're not making the money they were. It's costing them more to run the trucks because they're not picking up enough. They don't have enough customers. From my understanding, Southern Shores does it now, it's included in their tax base in their budget.
I don't think it's the interest, I think it's the economics. The people that borrow that garbage don't buy it anymore. They're not giving it to the buyer. China's like. China's not buying it anymore, so that's killing it.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
From my understanding, that increase is also three dollars a quarter.
Yeah.
I'd say that place will be nominal enough, but it's still a gauge.
It was three dollars a month, so it'd be ten dollars.
It's only eight dollars right now for a quarter or something.
But it was going to be ten dollars, it was going to go from seven a month to ten a month, when I, when my wife told me.
Oh, right, so it's twenty-four, so maybe go on to thirty or whatever.
Yes.
That's a quarter. A quarter. A quarter.
And right now, you don't have to.
Anyway, right.
If we, if we reviewed it again before we made any changes to the solid waste ordinance, we would want to look at amending our land use plan. If we leave it like this, because we have it as a private franchise.
Right, so I mean, should we just, to cover ourselves, broaden it, just add something?
Just delete private franchise vendors.
Support the recycling through.
Curbside. Still want curbside.
And gives you the latitude of either it's a private vendor or.
Private vendor.
Okay.
Can we just support curbside recycling?
Yeah. And the current.
And the town.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody good with that? Meredith, you got that? Okay, page seven. Thirty-one references fresh pond again. But I don't know that that's an issue, because we're still leaving it. This isn't getting to the recreational use, this is just talking about water supplies. So I don't see an issue.
But it's saying that we want to maintain it as a potable water source, which sort of brings your recreation a little bit off the water. Because to truly get recreation there, we've got to get it out of an AC.
So then that eliminates the.
Well, to do what Terry used to do, we'll just take a boat.
No, 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 no.
If it's fishing and stuff like that, then you can have it be in AC, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that's all we're looking.
Could you designate it as an emergency potable water source?
I think it already is.
Oh, okay, then. And so what you're saying, Meredith, is you just could put a gasoline engine in it, pretty much? No. I mean, is that what you're saying, or no, that's not what you're saying?
You cannot.
Correct, she is saying that, that you could not do that.
Canoes, kayaks.
Okay, so then it is okay as it stands?
Yes, ma'am.
Pardon me, observation, and Meredith, correct me if I'm wrong, but on page, policy thirty-three, the town supports regulation of signs through chapter one fifty-three of zoning. The zoning ordinance hasn't been revised to respond to the Supreme Court decision.
It portions of it have, yes, indeed.
Ma'am?
Portions of it have.
Okay, well, I would still suggest that we just delete chapter one fifty-three and just say signs through the zoning ordinance and eliminate the chapter one fifty-three. And for, if I may, for the group's information, my reference to the Supreme Court decision was that two years ago, our Supreme Court, in a court case, ruled that signs cannot be message specific in a, you can't in a regulatory document refer to a sign by the intended use of the sign. For example, you can't, according to the Supreme Court decision, refer to a real estate sign as a real estate sign. Which makes no sense to me, I admit, but that was.
You can't say open, closed signs, you can't say any of that. It's, it's, it's not. It's not, it is not pertinent to this specific policy.
I just, I just say zoning.
Okay, I mean, I don't think anyone's going to be heartburn, right? We're done.
No, just a question. I know that nobody likes the sound of flash and change and all that. Is that the only problem with LED and LCD? I mean, obviously, it's going to be, it'd be an energy savings for somebody to do that.
We allow LED and LCD lighting as behind a sign and through plastic or as spotlights, but not LED signs that they're changeable, flash and mobile. But we allow them as a light source because they are more energy efficient, and the ordinance is specific to that.
Is it, isn't this last sentence already in the code? Is it necessary to have it here?
It was there so that we could put it in the code.
This has to support.
It's got to be consistent.
We learned that. This, it has to be in here to be in there.
It's to a lawyer.
All right, anything else on page seven? Holly, really, you're leaving?
I love you, but I gotta go.
She's bringing the pizzas, guys.
All right, page eight. Okay, no, page eight.
Replacement at the Bonner Bridge, it's underway.
Which one are we on?
We're now on page eight.
Thirty-six.
Oh, thirty-six.
Yeah, Bonner Bridge.
Before we go to thirty-six, can we go to thirty-five and look at the revised strategy number sixty-six to replace that bicycle pedestrian language? It is on page sixteen.
What number?
Sixty-six.
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 I'm sorry.
It's on fifteen.
I'm sorry, is number sixty-two?
Number sixty-two, thank you.
One fifteen.
So we're proposing to strike thirty-five and replace it with sixty-two? Discard thirty-five?
Yes.
I'm done with that.
Meredith, does this, a lot of this language come from the pedestrian plan?
The Albemarle Regional Bicycle Plan, our pedestrian plan, and some state guidelines, yes, ma'am. Sorry, Eddie, not thirty-six.
Pardon me?
I said, sorry to interrupt you, I just, before we move, don't come on, keep it.
I think we delete the bottom of thirty-six, the bridge is being replaced.
We might start working now to replace it for the next time.
As part of construction of that bridge, that thing ain't going nowhere.
It's impressive. Okay, so we deleted thirty-five, we're striking the replacement of the Bonner Bridge from thirty-six. Anything else on page eight? Okay, page nine. Number thirty-eight, the planning board doesn't service the CAC now.
I put a note on the, we needed to update to reflect current boards and regulations.
Okay, perfect.
If, if y'all are okay with.
Yeah, you can just revise that.
Okay.
Anything else on page nine?
Again, number forty, we really need to say the town supports one of our own commissions. If you don't like them, you get rid of the commission.
Is it, yeah, I mean, is it necessary to have forty in there? If we didn't support it, we wouldn't have a historic landmarks commission.
If y'all would allow me to check with the general statutes for us establishing a landmark commission.
In the case that references the plan, that you need to have it in the plan.
Because it might be required by the, the general statutes to have, to be consistent with the land use plan. So if y'all will allow me to check.
Yeah, and if it says it, then just keep it, I think, yeah. Okay. All right, number, page ten.
Forty-one, who else wants to know what estate homes are?
What's number one?
Forty-one.
Forty-one, I said, who else wants to know what state homes are?
Estate apartments or condos.
I looked it up, and I.
I don't know what it is.
Do we?
It's, it's. Some of the.
Midway through the, after NC twelve development of estate homes, kind of hotels.
Some of the definitions are like a grandiose building on a large acreage, so. I don't know where that estate homes came from. That's not even an actual thing, is it? I mean, legally.
No, interestingly, someone could, that could mean the monster.
Yeah, that could be a house, that'd be a twenty bedroom home with a huge front.
We want to strike estate homes?
If we get rid of those twenty bedroom homes, a nice front nut.
That won't do anything, we don't have a definition for it anyway.
What is the three-tier approach to land use? The first sentence on forty-one.
The, it was, in the ninety-seven plan, it's explained quite well that the oceanfront is intended for vacation rental, hotel, multifamily, and vacation rental. Between the highways is commercial or short-term rental, even if it's residential. And the west side of US one fifty-eight is intended for single-family, long-term residence. And that was the three tiers of our zoning that the town established. And the zoning ordinance, Terry, remember this? The zoning ordinance was changed in ninety-one to reflect that tiered approach to zoning.
I had an issue with forty-four, just a concern.
Are we good with just getting rid of estate homes, is everybody?
Everybody okay with getting rid of estate homes?
Oh, yeah, 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 no. I'm good with that.
Yeah, forty-four.
Forty-four, too.
Well, I just underline it because we're residents of Kill Devil Hills, but we don't attend the first light schools, we're in Nags, we have a Nags Elementary, so I don't know that we want to, that's not consistent with where kids.
Oh, that was done on purpose, and I'm perfectly good with y'all, but they wanted Kill Devil Hills kids to be able, two boards ago, and the board that did this in two thousand and nine were adamant that Kill Devil Hills kids should go to the first light school, even though they don't. So that's why they put it in the land use plan.
I agree with that. It's a support ordinance.
They support it, but it, I mean, it just can't even happen from a capacity perspective, so.
But it was, I'm just telling you how it happened.
Where it came to be.
And you're welcome, it's not going to change a thing by keeping it in there or deleting it.
Only interest of condensation, pick it up.
Not going to change a thing, so y'all decide, just tell me what you'd like to do.
Well, it doesn't mean anything, remove it.
Yeah, especially if it's not possible.
Set it all together.
Can we go back to the estate homes, are they going to, are we deleting that whole sentence? Are we saying that? Okay, just delete the estate.
Estate homes, we'll keep.
Yeah, it's a development of hotel and multi-family.
You want, still, single-family homes can still be built.
So just, just estates, all you're taking out?
Yeah, we don't want to do.
Oh, okay, so leave.
Leave.
I want to leave.
I want to leave single-family.
Single-family homes, yeah.
So then we're actually replacing the word estate with single-family? Got it. And then back to forty-four, we're deleting the whole thing about attendance districts, is that what we're deleting?
Yeah.
Keep the first sentence.
First sentence only.
Okay. The first sentence, okay. Anything else on page ten?
Can I ask a quick question about forty-two? What's the town's consideration on the height increases? And I noticed about additional setbacks, I mean, what's the, are we specifically talking about something there?
This was done by the two thousand, in two thousand and nine, and I thought that this might be something that y'all would want to discuss, 'cause it actually considers height increase on the oceanfront.
I had that highlighted too.
Sure.
With, did you have recommendations for what you wanted?
I just had a question mark beside it.
Does anyone have a recommendation?
The ninety-seven ordinance specifically says that the height on the oceanfront shall remain forty-two feet. And there were several amendments that y'all may or may not remember in the early two thousand, mid, you know, two thousand five-ish, to increase height on the oceanfront. I believe this board actually dealt with an increased request. I'm not sure, John, I knew you were on the planning board, I'm not sure you were on the board yet, I don't remember exactly what, to increase height on the oceanfront that you denied, so I didn't know that was-
That was an existing hotel, right? That wanted to increase the height?
It was a zoning amendment.
It was a zoning amendment by-
For the whole oceanfront.
Right, but I mean, it was brought forth by someone, it was in reference to that, I guess. But I'm not allowed to say that.
We had a stakeholders committee for like months, and we talked about it. And her, we were trying to look at, let them go up a little bit if they comment a little bit. We were looking at sightlines being more-
Between buildings and-
Sightlines being, 'cause you're never gonna see other buildings, but you could see between the buildings possibly. Didn't go anywhere.
The ultimate thing that came out of both requests that came forward to the board for increasing height was that they were denied. So I'm not sure how you want this policy to be read.
So the first sentence and probably the last sentence, it's the middle sentence. The town will consider height increases on the oceanfront when additional setbacks, blah, blah, blah.
I think that always did go.
Strike that, I mean, striking that would be consistent with how we've been, the decisions that have been made. Is there consensus for that?
Can we just say the town will continue to oppose height increases to the oceanfront?
Yes.
Well, we're maintaining the traditional.
I'm just asking though.
You can, absolutely.
Does that mean you have to add beachfront to, just right after that, where it says the town supports maintaining building height in the commercial, light industrial zoning districts? And put oceanfront in there, in that sentence?
Residential and oceanfront zoning districts. Is that what the consensus is?
Okay, so, well, we've heard, we had a couple of things thrown out here.
If you look at the screen, I rewrote it, and y'all can take a, if you could see it.
We need bigger TVs. Use that TV right there.
Okay, so, it looks like how you've rewritten it, you struck the second sentence.
The town will consider height increases on the oceanfront when additional setbacks and beach access quarters are provided. To prevent excess building mass shadow of the beach and visual barriers from twelve has been stricken in the last sentence where you say the town will support maintained building height in commercial and light industrial zone districts as well as the lower height regulations in the residential and oceanfront is added zoning districts.
And that's consistent with what we've done, because where we raised it, was it between?
Yeah.
Okay, everybody good with that? Anything else on ten? All right, page eleven? Do you have anything on page eleven?
Question forty-seven, the town supports no weak operation of personal watercraft in three hundred-foot of its shoreline, is that including the ocean?
I know, it's funny, I put a question mark, is that true?
Maybe. I don't know if that's safe. Which number are we on?
We're on number forty-seven.
We can have a lake in the ocean, three hundred-foot shoreline. I assure you of that.
Yeah, I agree.
Delete the whole thing?
Delete this, that last sentence. The town supports no weak operation of personal watercraft.
Probably address some jet skis.
I think they're trying to keep it from-
They're trying to keep it from-
That's right, they were trying to get it, keep them from coming to shore, I believe.
No, it was, it was the sound side, and people complained about the noise of people zooming up and down and by their house. That's where it came from.
The sound side.
The sound side.
So, okay, so, where are we then? Are we, are we keeping it and adding sound side, or are we striking it?
Start, go ahead, we're striking the last sentence.
We're striking it, okay, got it, okay.
That's why I was in there, though, in, if the randomness hit you.
Somebody had an issue with it. Okay, you had a question?
Forty-six. The town supports a hazardous to in the preservation of family beach atmosphere. Where do the vape shops, they come into play there all on a, does that need to look? All of their materials are-
That's, that's our problem with those shops, is they're technically retail, so.
We don't have the right to-
They don't have the right to determine what you sell in a retail establishment unless it's illegal.
Do most people consider adult establishments or-
They're very well-defined by the state and the federal.
Tattoo parlors?
No.
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 'Cause we talked about allowing them, and we, we're not gonna do anything unless somebody asks. We talked about allowing them, but they're not included, okay.
Have we got tarot card, or are you using town?
Yep.
Yeah, but that's not an adult, yeah.
To me, it's the same as a baby.
Right, same, yep.
They're just fleecing the people.
That's a service.
That's my personal opinion.
That's my thing with the vape, is prevalent in high school.
High school, middle school.
Middle school, that's, that's why a girl come ask for a job, they have a vape thing in her hand. We're hiring.
Anything else on page eleven?
I'm just, I wanna ask the question, I've heard several comments since this process started about town center for Kill Devil Hills, and is that something that might need to be in here? Or is it even something that may or may not happen in the future?
There's been a lot of discussion about it in the past, and I think it's a great thing, just where you put it, but I think it's, but it is constantly possible in the future. A couple of areas.
Yeah, Bill Pitt and myself and a couple others talked about it when I was on the planning board. We had a little small group together, and he was talking about having a business district maybe from Ocean Bay down to the town line or somewhere, and have it zoned different to create a kind of a walking atmosphere. But I think we decided that it has developed to the point where you really can't change it at this point. 'Cause everything in there practically has developed. I don't, I don't, if you answer your question.
I know that-
It could get to the point where the property that the houses are on, and they get to a certain age, that it would be possible for somebody to buy multiple homes at that point and start moving in that direction, which I I totally encourage.
Yeah, we decide where we wanna be.
Be in a place in town where the whole county's spread out. I mean, there's no place that's like a town center in the whole county, really. Maybe Mania.
Maybe Mania was, maybe.
Would it really benefit Kill Devil Hills?
That's what Nax is trying to do with Gallery Row area. They're trying to promote that and put in infrastructure. So it becomes a destination place like Duck is, once you get there, you get out and you can walk around to all these various attractions or shops or whatever.
Yeah, that, that new world they have is phenomenal, that is definitely a destination. I'd love to see Kill Devil Hills do something like that, that would be incredible, down the marsh.
That was on our list to do at the forty-four acres.
Oh, that would be-
It's still on the list.
We got a lot of marsh back there to deal with, though.
Do we need to have something in those policies, or, I mean, or are we just gonna say we're never gonna do it because it's too hard?
Well, I was gonna say, could we come up just with a, basically, it's a statement being open to-
Looking at, it's interesting.
Studying or evaluating or-
Interested in the possibility of a major town center or something.
Mary, are we giving you anywhere near enough to work with to try to draft something?
Yeah.
Or not?
Towns.
Concept, that's a good concept. Concept. Mary says, leave me alone, it's late.
Towns Center.
Town supports concept for the town center or creation of a walkable community area.
Let's accept it.
Between the highways?
Between the highways, I like that.
I think, I think Green would do something like that, get a, took a street or something downtown and made-
They redid the park. And then they redid, they made downtown, uptown. They redated and tried to clean it up, polished it some, and then-
Got you.
Yeah, we may not wanna live it ourselves by saying between the highways.
I agree.
Just leave it at community areas.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
Where's that one?
I'm just being added as a new number, or whatever, once there. All right, are we ready to go to page twelve?
I got, I got some on forty-one. It just says the town supports regulations to require preservation. I think we should support the preservation, but I don't know about getting regulations where you gotta keep this tree and that tree and all that on your property. We discussed that a great deal also.
Wasn't there another one earlier on that said somewhere, isn't there another one?
That was about the maritime forest.
Oh, I know.
You know, most people don't realize how much vegetation we have now compared to what we had twenty or thirty years ago. I mean, we've got twice as much. I'm not for a clear-cutting up property, but supporting regulations, we don't have any regulations at this point.
I think there, there might be one.
It's within the right of way.
Within the right of way, like if-
You can't cut down trees within the right of way without town.
Which nobody pays attention. No, they don't. But like in front of my house, thirteen feet belongs to the town, it's our yard.
Well, when they came in and put in all the swells, they took out all the vegetation. They took down five of my oak trees.
Well, on the, on the other end of that, like, when they go to my path, the final stage, he kept every possible tree he could. I give him credit for that. Because I know the guys from RPC were ditching at me like crazy. He wouldn't let us cut down this tree, it's in our way, that's thieves.
But now, twenty years later, I would have to be taking them out.
Huh?
You know how I work at RPC, you know.
Yeah, you want that nigga to ditch that. I never saw a show with your hand, Eddie.
You guys wanna do something different to forty-nine?
I think we should support it, retaining it, vegetation, but I don't know that we should support regulations.
You're talking about striking the word regulation?
Yeah, basically, the regulations, I don't know that we need regulations.
Town supports preservation.
Preservation of existing vegetation.
Okay.
I don't know what you said, I don't know what you said.
On the second sentence in forty-nine, you're striking the words regulations to require. So it would read the town supports preservation of existing vegetation. Okay, so we're moving to page twelve?
I forgot, could turn off fifty.
Number fifty?
Yes, should we add anything about the town's social media presence in the last sentence? Town supports citizen involvement through the town's website, email communications.
Social media.
Social media sites and participation in attendance and participation in public meetings.
We're not long at social media, you think it could be a rendezvous? It's a fad.
The only thing, though, is we don't take what someone writes on social media and make that public comment. Whereas you can email public comment and you can come speak at public comment. You're engaged, but, but people that wanna comment on social media, we're not taking that.
It's not input.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes that can be.
So we use social media to get output, but we don't use it for input.
Yes, we should use it to help-
So we use it to get information, but we don't use it to take information.
Citizen involvement can include education, though, so that's, if you, if you look at it from that direction.
But you could, you could, you could, social media is a way for us to, for the town to use social media to-
It says encourages citizens' input via boards, commissions, agency, involvement through website, email, communications and attendance.
And if they're reading it, they're getting education, which is being involved.
Communication.
Yeah, probably is.
I think you're communicating information when you use whatever you're using.
One and a half, I don't remember what's up.
Right. It's like, yeah, I just did more misconstrued public comment, but that's not saying public comment, so, that's fine. Okay, so we're adding social media? Is that what we're doing?
It's a big touch point people have with town.
Are we? Well, I don't know, are we adding social?
How do you guys feel about that?
I don't have an opinion either.
I think social media is ninety percent fake, so.
I mean, it's in there, it's not in there.
All right, leave it out, okay.
Fifty-one and fifty-two is pretty much saying the same thing, implementation of the hazard mitigation.
And if you, if you, fifty-one and fifty-two, I would recommend deleting both. They've been revised in strategies number sixty-seven, sixty-nine and seventy-one respectively.
Cut them.
Okay, which numbers then?
Sixty-seven, sixty-nine and seventy-one. Sixty-seven specifically talks about our hazard mitigation plan, on the federal hazard mitigation program and the Dare County Emergency Management Plan. Sixty-nine talks about our disaster recovery. And what was the other one I said?
Seventy-one. She said seventy-one, we've already talked about seventy-one.
And seventy-one talks about our flood damage prevention, so both of those have been covered in our revised. If y'all are comfortable with that.
So striking fifty-one and fifty-two. And we have the others that will cover it. Okay. We move on to page thirteen, number fifty-three.
You're trying to get going, aren't you?
I had a couple of things on fifty-three. The full-time emergency management coordinator, is that the Dare County? Emergency manager?
The town doesn't have one, right?
The town doesn't, yeah, so I just didn't know if we need to say Dare County?
We probably could put Dare County in there.
And the other is the shelter.
In, in most cities, the emergency manager coordinator is the fire chief. He takes on that role. If you wanna add it to his job description, that would be up to Debbie, I guess. But most places, the fire chief is emergency manager.
So I don't know if that's what this was referencing.
This is a full-time, so, it says continuation of a full-time, so that has to be the one that's already in existence.
We can just add Dare County, full-time, the continuation of a Dare County full-time?
Yeah, I think the system is.
I have an issue with the bottom bullet there, a backup evacuation shelter design feature. Because Dare County's not, we're not supposed to be, we're not designed to be a shelter.
There are some places designated as shelters there, but not until after the storm.
Post-storm, but, yeah, but not an evacuation shelter.
Is there a warning title for post-storm?
We've used the high school before.
The first light schools.
The first high schools are the same.
The YMCA we've used before.
Okay.
It says in the future, so they talk about future construction or future. The ones we have now, becoming ones in the future.
I don't think sheltering a place in storms is what they want us to do.
No, no, I mean, that's not part of Dare County's emergency management plan at all.
Strike.
So strike that last bullet. Done. Okay.
Number fifty-four.
Okay, fifty-four.
Four questions about that.
What is neo-traditional?
That was exactly the same thing.
Non-traditional.
Neo-traditional, you know, matrix neo.
New traditional.
New.
Yeah.
I think that you could probably. You could probably change neo-traditional to overlay development. That's what it's referring to.
So what should we put in there instead?
I think you could put overlay.
Instead of neo-traditional? Or where are you saying put overlay?
Sound is cool.
Where, well, wait now, where it came, where it came from, it's, there's multiple things. That, that you create a town center, you have a big open space, and then you have very dense around it. Um, it also came from Currituck, do you remember, um. Can't remember the planning director at the time, Mary, help me. He did the, he did the major revision to the subdivision ordinance in Currituck where.
The Jack Semino?
Huh?
Jack Semino?
Jack Semino. You had the smaller lots, but you had to have, uh, open space, um, with it, so you had these dense clusters of homes and then these big open spaces in their subdivision ordinance, and it was very. Cutting edge in North Carolina at the time, in the eight, in the nineties. I'm not sure where neo-traditional came from, um, it wasn't me, but.
Don't leave it now.
I think you could just, I, I think you could just delete it and it sounds just. Current development by increasing land use incentives in select opportunity areas using environmental data.
Everybody okay with that?
Back it up.
This is current development. You just delete, we're gonna erase it.
All right, number, anything else on that page, did anyone else have any?
Number fifty-five, is that on that page?
It is.
I'd like to refer you to strategy number sixty as a possible replacement. And that is the alternative energy. Yes, that's a, a alternative energy, um, replacement.
I don't think that number.
They both talk about homes?
Times and businesses, yeah.
We're strike fifty-five.
That's what I'm asking.
Was there a, I'm sure there was, a land use survey question around offshore wind farms and so?
Yes, I don't know the answer to it off the top of my head.
But there's some of that line of sight.
It supported, it supported alternative energy. I know the survey supported alternative, I don't know if it specifically said offshore wind farms or uses of winds as energy. I don't know what the survey specifically.
Because it's offshore, is it within sight of the, if it was in the ocean, we'd be able to see it from speech. Contentious. Is it sound, where, where are we gonna put the offshore wind farms that we support?
It's in there.
Sixty.
The last sentence.
Yeah. I don't know. Where they gonna go, would it be visible from the shore? There's a lot of questions to ask about that.
How far is offshore?
Yeah.
Well, would it?
I'm getting a survey, if y'all want to move on, I'll get the survey and tell you exactly what the question is.
I think we have consensus to strike fifty-five, keep sixty.
But then we're gonna look at the survey.
But we may look at that, maybe we want to, you know, make that last sentence a little more exploratory versus just saying we're supporting it, so we're, we support. Consideration of offshore farms, something like that, so just to, that we're open-minded to it, but we're not committing. All right, well, let's, okay.
Offshore, they're minimum ten miles out. Ten miles offshore. That's out of, out of sight.
So I had a month.
Do we have jurisdiction that far? Okay. So is it kind of a neat point then, is it? I think they were mess somewhere, yeah. All right, we'll, we'll come back to sixty in just a minute, let's jump in, let's keep going, page fourteen. Brings us to number fifty-six and fifty-nine. Mary, isn't fifty-seven somewhat redundant to that one big one that we just did? Or no, sixty-two?
Out of fifty-seven, you need to look at revised number sixty-six.
Are you sure it's not sixty-two again?
I think, yes.
Okay. Cause I'm thinking that's just a little, I'm thinking we don't need fifty-seven either now. It's all in.
No, it should, it's, you're right, sixty-two.
So can we strike fifty-seven?
Yes.
From the Department of Redundancy Department.
Any other concerns on page fourteen?
Uh, on fifty-nine, I think it's, it's kind of wide open there, and here's how, I would rewrite that. The town supports studying the impacts that may result from the placement of fill material. And will consider regulations with standards to mitigate impacts found to be detrimental to the town. It does, this is kind of wide. Pin down anything, I can hand this to you, Meredith. If you want to type that in.
That was good.
It's a nestle litter.
Town supports study of impacts of placing fill material.
Just give me. Lot easier.
Easier for me too.
Okay, so. With that changed, that we go to. I'm actually looking at my other, the packet that was given us to it tonight, cause I can reference that. So sixty, we're good unless we want to revisit that last sentence in a minute, and we'll wait and get the, the study. Sixty-one though is new.
Can we go back up a second?
Back up to fifty-eight, that was.
I want to. Fifty-six. Do we want to provide how, workforce housing, or do we want to encourage it, or? Something, we're not going to provide it.
So it's efforts to provide.
I think we should try to provide to encourage. Yeah, I think it's a good call. To encourage.
How would we do that?
Just said, we're not providing it.
We're not providing it.
The way this is written.
Or efforts to provide.
Somebody's efforts to provide it.
We're just shining an apple there.
How would change it?
There's nothing to be done.
But how, how, how are we supporting efforts to provide housing for its workforce without?
We don't make them pay for permits.
We've done it. Is its workforce in the.
Is its workforce like town? That's what I'm, that was my. Like, is that for the outer banks?
The its is the issue.
Is it just the town?
Right, it's for.
I'll send that to everybody.
I thought that was like, yeah, just.
Its.
It's out.
Yeah, we don't need, it's really right, for workforce.
Yeah.
To strike its out, and now you're making workforce for the entire area.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, good call.
Oh, you have to put workforce before housing also, make it sound right.
Town supports efforts for, I work for something within town boundaries.
Probably works better. Workforce housing within town boundaries, yes.
Am I moving workforce in front of housing, is that what you're saying?
Yes, and then you're striking for its. Okay. Okay, and so, was there something else on this page?
Fifty-eight, uh, town supports playing public transportation, including bus routes and stuff.
Hold on, are, are we still stuck on a different one, have we all moved on or not?
Fifty-eight, I, I would like, I would like to get your opinion on fifty-eight.
Okay, well, hold on, I don't know that. Guys, are y'all done with?
Yes.
You're done, okay, all right.
We're trying to work me horrible in there somehow.
All right, so now we are, as a group, moving to fifty-eight, all right, the concern with fifty-eight is?
My concern was the town supports plan for public transportation on the outer banks, including bus routes, I don't know about. Bus routes could be just.
Been tried about.
Public transportation.
I was gonna say, the county has tried it at least twice under my regime, and, and the rides were about a thousand bucks a pop, so. No luck. Pilot project.
See, if we don't have it in there, John, if anybody ever does come up with a plan and they need us to. Move some things around so they can have bus stops to pick up and discharge people. We'll, we'll, we'll never be able to do it because it won't be consistent with our plan, so this is just kind of keeping the door open.
Right now, there is public transportation.
It, it, it's never comes along, so we want to be ready.
Transportation system, and there is an on-demand truck transportation system versus a route.
That's, it does a lot of good for people.
That's, that's all we have.
It does a lot of goodness to answer.
Department of Transportation.
I think it, I think that works pretty well.
And we, we use those to try to do the route system and it did not work.
Yeah, that, I agree with you, it's never gonna really work, but if we ever.
I agree, I, I think I, I'd be amenable of trying it again for the next five years.
You know, Howard Hughes could show back up and say, I'm gonna buy, buy three buses, but we don't have any stuffs.
All right, so we're pulling in a.
The vans around?
Yes.
That's Dare County.
Dare County.
You're the Department of Transportation.
So we, you know, that's part of it really, and we support that for.
Okay, so. Okay, we're now table two now. Sixty-one. This is new, so what, um.
Go back to the alternative energy, we have the survey results.
Okay. We struck fifty-five.
Sixty, approximately sixty percent of the population specifically agreed or strongly agreed offshore turbines and wind farms should be supported. In your land use plan survey. Twenty-seven point nine percent strongly agreed and thirty-four point seven nine percent agreed.
It's more than fifty feet offshore.
So just, I mean, do you want to?
So I'm just, just saying it's because y'all said you needed to go back to it.
So just leave it the way it sits, the town supports offshore wind farms?
People want it?
We're gonna have positive reactions, huh?
Yes.
All right, so sixty stays as is, sixty-one. Any issue with that?
I don't know. I mean, we're continuing to monitor and assess, but I think the, the survey says that the people in town want to see a decrease in the size of these single-family homes.
We can find a legal way to do that.
The, uh, the reason it was written like that is because the board has spent. A, a tremendous amount of time reviewing large single-family homes and, um. At this point, could not come up with a solid, um, definitive. Yes or no, and felt like that we weren't giving up on it, but we were going to continue to monitor. Um, and assess the impacts of the large homes. We've written to the health, to the North Carolina. Department of Insurance to try to get them to write regulations for an intermediate house, and until that happens, it's gonna be very difficult for us to do much.
Yeah, that's really all it is.
That's a step in the. That shows that we're trying to do something to alleviate.
Okay. So we'll leave that, sixty-two, we've already talked about. Sixty-three.
This was the one that, the reason that, really the reason the revision to table two was done. Before the, um, it talked about updating the zoning and subdivision and flood damage prevention ordinance, and it had a list of bulleted items. There was two, almost two pages of them. I, I, I removed the bullets, I felt a lot of them were very good ideas, but I didn't want to get that specific in a land use plan because of. Our requirement to be consistent. If there's stuff in there that either we're not doing or that we want to do that's not in there, it would, it would cause us some problems, so I, I, um. The real reason that the table two was revised was to remove all those bullet points and make it slightly more generic to give the board. This board, the next board, four to five years from now, the ability to be able to, um, modify or, or, um. Change the zoning ordinance. Because of changing times that maybe we can't think of right now in specific bullet points, so.
So this is your big difference between what was in our packet and then what you received tonight?
Yes, not, this was.
Not all these bullets, but otherwise sixty-three is just a.
And the other ones were morally just consolidated, because they were same topic stuff, but, um. This was the big one that there was a large portion deleted. I think that those bullet points will be kept in our computers for when we do update the zoning ordinance, but, um. I don't know that they need to be included in the land use plan.
I was really looking forward to asking about the elimination of confusing and contradictory requirements. I was loaded and ready to go.
Right. So we don't have to now, all right, so we go, sixty-three as presented tonight.
There was something on the previous surface on there.
Yeah.
It's the same.
It was. But best land use practices could probably cover that too. All right, anything else on?
So we were good with that?
Yeah, we're good with that. So sixty-four is different than what we had.
It incorporated part of, one of the, um, ones above. It's, um. It, it, it added into, and then we, the, we, we added into it that we wanted to specifically pay attention to handicap individuals and handicap accesses. And we also added some language about the, um, public access for beach nourishment to meet the Army Corps requirements. Um, and then the rest of it was part of. Um, I'll tell you in a second.
All right, so it concluded sixty-six from what we already received. While she's looking for that.
Number twenty-eight. Number twenty-eight was folded into. Number sixty-four. In addition to the handicap, the Army Corps.
Well, then let me ask you, are we striking then twenty-eight, whereas not the redundancy?
No.
I didn't make note of that.
Strike twenty-eight.
Okay, so strike twenty-eight, because it's now included in sixty-four.
Yes.
Okay. Sixty-five, we've already discussed. Sixty-six, we've already discussed. Sixty-seven, we've already discussed. Sixty-eight, well. We've discussed it, but.
I got any questions? Sixty-eight. It's possible that might become. Not even necessary if we go to what all the channels are talking about.
No, we'll still be in the community rating system and we'll actually get more points, and we might get more reductions because we'll have such a higher regulatory standard. It's very important to be in the community rating system because we're still gonna have special flood hazard areas.
So it's more, that's why, more than one way to get that.
That's correct.
Sorry.
No, no. All right, we've talked about sixty-nine, we've talked about seventy. We talked about seventy-one. Leaves us to seventy-two. Did I miss something?
I'm just getting approval from Mayelli. And then we've added seventy-three for town centers.
Right, okay, but seventy-two, and then, then we added seventy-three. And granted, it's not gonna be seventy-three when we're all said and done, because we made a number of strikes.
Yes, but just for the purposes of.
Right, for tonight's reference, yes. Any other questions, comments?
Any other strategies not listed?
Anything, yeah, anything that you feel we haven't covered? New policy?
We have one more order of business.
The map.
Yes.
It's not updated, or the same one we had?
That's the same one you had in the planning board packet. I will, I don't know if this is big enough for you guys to see there on the boards, but I circled the specific areas that were in question. Dale pointed out to us. See the circles? I tried to make them teal. They're kind of the weird color. Dale has pointed out to us that our future land use map is very much mirroring our zoning map as far as where our commercial, our industrial, our residential, you know, all that, our areas in primary concern. It, it, it's very similar. But Dale pointed out that we have two areas, both between the highways, probably a block in from the highways, that is primarily developed residential. We've always left it commercial because typically those are short-term rental houses, which is a form of commerce in our tourism industry. So wanted to check with everybody to see if we wanted to continue to call that commercial, or if you wanted to call it residential. That, if you do decide to call it residential, there will be conflicts with consistency until the zoning ordinance is updated, at which time you will have to change the zoning to match your land use plan, meaning you'll have to downzone that area. Your third choice is to call that mixed use, which could be further examined and developed in the zoning ordinance, but it won't cause any direct conflicts because we don't have mixed use right now. And then we could put, when we do update, which zoning ordinance is budgeted to be updated this coming year, we're going to try to get through this first. But so that you could maybe examine the residential used as short-term rentals, which is our primary industry, or do you still just want to designate it as commercial? And if you don't want to answer now, you can think about it, and we can talk about it at the next meeting, or, because it's not an easy, I don't think it's an easy answer.
Is there a downside just leaving it commercial?
No. It's not consistent.
Well, I saw a lot of people commenting on.
It's not consistent with the development pattern in that specific area.
If it does go to mixed use, is it, is it only going to be a commercial and residential mixed use, or would another type of property be able to be put in there under that designation?
Well, see, right now, right now, we have tiered zoning, which makes Dale crawl. Because it's, it's different than most other types of zoning. We have, we, you start restrictive, and everything allowed in the most restrictive zone is allowed in every other zone. So in commercial, we allow residential. A lot of cities in commercial zones, you can only have commercial, or in a mixed-use zone, you have to have commercial with residents above that type of development, and it's more restrictive based on the name of the zone. That's not how Killabell was developed. When we redo our zoning ordinance, we can potentially look at different types of zoning, but right now, in our commercial zone residential, single-family residential is allowed. It's a permitted use, and it's obviously being utilized.
So in the commercial zone, you could put light industrial, you could put.
No, not light industrial.
See, that was my question.
No, light industrial.
Is anything else going to be able to come in if we label it mixed use? Or is it mixed use?
There's no mixed use in our zoning.
We have to find.
Okay, that's where.
You would have to, you would have to develop a mixed use when you update your zoning ordinance. You would, you would have to.
That's why I was confused. I didn't recognize that term.
If you leave it commercial, it is what it is. If you make it residential, you're going to have to downzone it.
I don't think anyone's in favor of that.
I would not do that, because if you're ever going to have a town center, it's going to be one of those two areas. And then you're going to screw yourself later.
No, it's not. I'd say you leave it.
So it's either, you could say mixed use commercial. I mean, there's all kinds of ways you could do this. It's a future land use map. It's not, doesn't directly have to reflect your zoning ordinance right this time.
And I was, well, I think everyone's saying, is there, there's no issue with leaving it commercial?
So much.
If we change our if we change our zoning ordinance to be more restrictive, we'll have to look at our future land use map again to say if we say commercial, we can have single-family dwellings in the future, because you want to create a town center, so when these single-family dwellings deteriorate to the point of destruction, they can't put a new one there, and eventually you'll have enough room to put a town center. You know, let's say that was the plan, then we're going to have to change the future land use map. That can be addressed at that time.
But we could do that, huh? Okay, there's definitely consensus for keeping it commercial.
Couple quick things. In the legend there, could, we have a fluke that we've written out that future land use, so that, you know, people aren't getting it.
Can we have what?
Where it says FLU, can you write out future land use, have a key?
And the low-density residential, the yellow, is that, is ocean, is our oceanfront actually low-density residential? Meredith?
She's looking at.
I'm looking at it sideways, that's why it disappeared, sorry. Not really, no.
This is where multifamily goes in hotels.
Yeah, I agree.
I would have thought that, I would have thought that the words median density.
I think that the, I think that really the mustard and the, the yellow need to be reversed. I think so.
Wish that was a legend color mistake.
A fluke.
Yeah. Couple flukes.
How is that? Isn't that oceanfront property art? What's the zoning of the area?
O-I-R, Ocean Impact Residential. Ocean Impact Residential. It allows hotels, motels, multifamily, and restaurants associated with that, and the residential low zone, which is the mustard, doesn't allow any commercial at all. That's where that's coming from. You know, we have, we have higher, it's still residential, but it's, it allows more intense residential use than the residential low zone. And the density's higher, and we just eliminated multifamily in the residential low zone, so we don't even have that anymore.
So you're good with making those color changes? Anything else? Anyone see anything else? All right. Well, to officially wrap up the meeting, I think on the agenda, bring it with me, we have another public comment time. Anyone have anything they want to share during this public comment opportunity as we come with us to the very end? Welcome, Brian.
Hello, my name is Brian McDonald. I own a business here in town, live on Bay Drive. As you move forward with your land use plan, keep in mind that we all need employees, and the housing has got so bad that we just cannot get employees to move into the area with the zoning we've got now, where everything has to be a single-family home, or what we've got now. We all know what's out there. We know there's tons of illegal duplexes. A lot of them could be easily made legal duplexes. You wouldn't have any more density on a residential lot than a five-bedroom house if you had two bedrooms upstairs and two down. But it would give you another family place, another worker's place. So as you move forward with this, I would ask that you at least keep that in mind, that we need places for employees. In ten years, I don't know what air conditioning will cost, but it's going up every year. Labor is just ridiculous because we have to pay people so much so they can live here. And you may not even be able to get somebody in. It's going to get bad. It'll get a lot worse, it seems like, before it gets better. So I would encourage you, this is good for everyone, to keep that in mind, as we all need employees. The town needs employees. I mean, you can't get, the hospital needs people. They can't get staff in because they can't find somewhere affordable to live. So just keep that in mind if you would, that's all I'm asking. Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Back to what I talked about in the first public comment, I know that we added multifamily to one section of this, but we didn't really talk about the, what we were going to do about it as far as, you know, are we going to look into changing some of the architectural requirements, you know, in the, in the zones where these new projects are, where we've added architectural requirements.
Well, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we would have any ability to do anything now that they're already.
No, I'm not talking to them. I'm talking about in the future. You know, I understand that now they are what they are. But in the future, if someone builds a multifamily in, in those zones, you know, it would be nice if they had to have some type of architectural requirement because we require that other places. We just don't require it in the light industrial.
Yeah.
Just for those, though, not for warehouses or.
Probably what I would talk to the Board of Commissioners about doing is kicking it to the planning board for you guys to vet it and discuss it and come up with some recommendations.
It's kind of a catch-22 with what Mr. McDonald just said. I mean, if you're trying to create affordable housing for workforces, multifamily is a venue for that, and if we impose architectural standards on there, it costs more to build, so it's a, it's a very slippery slope. Just a thought right there.
Well, we, I believe we're going to have a presentation from the Chamber, a follow-up presentation. It's my understanding they were going to do what they did for Deer County, where they went through and made recommendations of all ordinances that they should be looking at. And I thought they were going to come to each town and do that, and then when they did, it would send us to working with planning staff and planning boards to evaluate that, so if that is the process that may be transpiring, all this should be factored in at the same time with discussion, so I believe that's still forthcoming.
They're still wrapping stuff up with the county and municipalities are next.
Any other public comment or comments from anyone?
Thank you, guys, in the land use.
Yeah, I did. Going back to Mr. McDonald's comments, and I'm in full agreement with you, it's a terrible situation, but a lot of that falls on the builders. I mean, they want to get every penny they, and they're in business. They want to get every penny they can out of every board they put up, and that's what business is. I agree. So then the only alternative that summer help has is to go to Currituck. Well, they're not going to do that because they come to work on Saturday morning and Sunday morning. So now we're back to Mid-Currituck Bridge. I mean, it's a catch-22. It's just, there's really no answer.
All of it is disagree with that statement. It's, it's almost impossible to buy property here and try to put up affordable housing. I mean, you, it's just economically feasible without some kind of help from the government or somebody, some kind of, I mean, you just can't do it. The land's too expensive. Deer County tried to give the property to the builder in Liberty City, he wouldn't even come down here and build it. In Manio, how are you going to do it on the beach? I mean, it's just you get as much as you can out of what you're selling in your store.
Sure, that's what I'm saying. It's business.
I know, but I disagree that it's the builders. I mean, there's got to be, you got to be able to make some money.
It is such a complicated, multifaceted, because there's also, there's so many segments of the population when you start talking workforce housing. I mean, you're talking about hospitals and health departments and all, trying to recruit people, but then you're also talking about your seasonal workforce. That's different than what maybe someone that's moving in to take a nursing job is looking for versus, so it's, it's but there's at least more people coming to the table to have discussions, and thank you for, I mean, just bringing up, because it's only going to get worse if we don't start having some strategies, and it's going to have to be multiple strategies, too, from just one thing, so. So it will be back before all of us, for sure.
And they'll look architecturally pleased.
That's right.
All right, anything else for the good of the group tonight? Not a motion from the Board of Directors?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Land Board. A lot of work.